It's glimmering. Should be ready for you now.
Good morning, everybody. Let's call the planning commission meeting Thursday, May 23. And looks like everybody is here today. So we will go ahead and get going with the flag salute.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
I remember under God.
He skipped a section.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. He thought it all. It was just kind of in rounds.
That's why he was supposed to be there.
And he has a more compelling voice than I do. Okay. This is the opportunity. Oh, agenda changes.
There are none. Just note that item E1 will be continued. It was noticed, so it's on the agenda, but there were some issues that came up at the last minute, so we bumped it to the 13th.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the planning commission on land use issues not on the agenda. Five minutes per person, 15 minutes per topic, and we will not be taking any action on items presented under public comments. No comments. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull our single item from the consent agenda?
No.
All right, I am open to a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from the March 28 planning commission meeting.
Second.
Any comments? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we will go ahead and get started on the public hearings related to the general plan update and final EIR. It's a continuation of yesterday's hearing.
I think maybe we formally continue the items.
Yeah, we'll open it and close it, right? Okay, we'll open the public hearing for the tentative parcel map for James Whitaker.
Again, as I said earlier, this is requested to be continued to the 13th of June.
Great.
Public comments on the continuing.
Any public comments? On James Whitaker's tentative map? None. We will close the public hearing and continue this to whatever date you let us know.
June 13.
Do you need a motion on that?
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, a motion.
So I move that we move that item to the regular meeting of June 13.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we will go back to our general plan hearing, sorry. And to get started on that, we left off yesterday afternoon with the commissioners' discussion of the land use element text. But I think that we wanted to kind of get caught up on what modifications were made yesterday and.
So I had a prior commitment last night and did not do any additional work after I left here at about 6:30. And my intent was to, one was because of that that I had, you've made the edits to the version that did not include the, I had to try to track that down. I was able to do that this morning, but I haven't had a chance to go through and make all the edits, make sure that there was nothing else missing from that. I did pass out, I can provide it up on the counter, the correct map that includes the two specific plant areas as well as the page from the table that describes mixed use. Unfortunately, I didn't also copy the page that shows the, see below for details, intensity of intensive uses. So at a break, I will go over and get that so we have that available as well. So I guess what I'd like to do, if there's any other changes that you, you know, specific changes to language of the policy that you want to continue to discuss, we can do that now, and then the next step would be to get into the land use map itself. And then what I will do is compile all of the changes that we went through yesterday in a revised draft and send that out to you and we'll post it on our website so that it's available to the public as well.
So I had a couple of things, but before that, Kelly, you threw anything?
Well, on the land use element, I'm not sure. We came to a consensus, if you will, on LU 1.6, and we have not discussed policy LU 5.3. LU 5.3, we have not discussed. The other suggested changes under land use, the proposed revisions, I have no problem with.
So I did book this morning at LU 1, the goal, and I have a couple of thoughts on how we might focus it more on existing communities as opposed to implying that we're developing new communities that maybe we can discuss. And this is what I have. Development of existing communities to provide a mix of uses including residential, commercial, visitor-serving, and job-generated uses that facilitate the development of independent and economically viable communities.
Would you read it again?
I will try to read my own writing one more time.
It's going to come out the same way.
Yeah, let's see if it is. Development of existing communities to provide a mix of uses including residential, commercial, visitor-serving, and job-generating uses that facilitate the development, I don't know if it's as independent and economically viable communities.
I like it.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, and then I took a look at the 1.6, which is the. Make sure Peter has it.
Development of existing communities that.
To provide.
To provide. I'm sorry, could you read that first phrase again? To provide mixed uses?
To provide a mix of uses including, same list we had before. And then the only other change is after independent and before communities add and economically viable.
Okay.
Really not that different from what it was.
No, it's good.
And on 1.6, we discussed that it's, why do we have it? Because future planning commission could or board of supervisors could change this. However, that's true of every single element of the general plan, so I'm not sure that's a reason to not include a policy that does support our goal of not allowing additional changes that intensify use or density outside of the community areas. So I guess I just want to come back to it. I think maybe it could be simplified, and again, maybe it could be focused more on the existing communities, although it is a little bit of an awkward fit under a goal that is about mixed use and not limiting growth.
But this is, this is different than most general plan provisions. This specifically purports to control changes to land use designations. I don't think anything else in this general plan does that.
Well, I think when we get to what the agriculture coalition suggested, it has a whole bunch of guidelines for, that you would apply in a change of designation.
That's the one that's in the interim, and we'll get to that. And I think you're right, that may be the only other one.
But that other, that is a policy that is talking about when you do actually the same thing, changing land use designations. These are guidelines. And I think, I think it provides, and we'll discuss that separately, but it's a good example of a lot of thought has gone into a particular problem at this stage, and future planning commissions and board of supervisors can benefit from the depth of analysis that has gone into it in deciding whether they're going to feel at least morally bound by that or feel as if they should pay attention to it, or should they just amend the general plan without paying any attention to it. So I can see under those, particularly under those circumstances where a lot of work has gone into it and they've really formulated many standards that are worthy of attention, why you would, you would have a provision like this. This one, I think, is less compelling, but it does indicate when, when we were, if we, if we agree with this, when we were doing this general plan and looking at the entire big picture, this was how the county felt at that time. And it, it's a policy, and it's a policy that, as you pointed out, can be negated. Nobody is bound to this policy in the future because they could just amend this general plan to take 1.6 out if they didn't agree. But at least it shows a, it shows where we stood, if this, if we agree with it, it shows where we stood at this point.
It's actually something that was added as a result of public comments, it looks like, or letters, and I think the compelling reason to keep it is that we already have adequate properties designated for development to more than cover all of the anticipated development and scattered throughout the county to try to provide that flexibility. So I think this helps to show that we acknowledge that. We, we know that we have designated more land than is absolutely necessary or even close to necessary. And this at least sends that message that the intent is not to keep adding more land just because somebody asks for it. So for me, it's more a recognition that that is the intention, has been the intention of the county for quite some time, is to limit that, designating increasing amounts of land for future development. Brett, you want to weigh in?
Well, I think I've said what I had to say on this mostly. I just don't think it's wise to include a legally ineffective policy that purports to shackle, hobble, control the board of supervisors in the future. Just doesn't make sense. And if it stays in, I think it's mischievous unless, you can't make a change to the land use map under these circumstances unless findings can be made that additional land is necessary to meet the housing or employment needs of the county. If this didn't get changed by the board and it was in effect, somebody will always be able to argue that there is someplace else you can put your project that is not necessary to put it here, even if that's what the market wants, if that's what everybody's time wants except for one dissident group per person. It's a litigation breeder, and I don't agree with it.
You know, an alternative may be to, maybe soften the language a bit, you know, shall not be approved is pretty cut dry, and there could be the, you know, shall consider or, you know, shall, you know, consider the need for additional. It doesn't then, you know, bind the county so much, but at least it, you know, provides that, the direction that we're trying to get to here is that we want to direct our growth to the existing communities and not expand out where it's really not necessary. So it just says, as a consideration, you might consider some alternative language that, you know, does, I think that Commissioner Worcester is correct, that is, you know, you really can't bind someone to some future decision. At the same time, I understand the rationale for the policy and the guidance that we're trying to provide here is we really want to direct growth to the existing communities and we're just immediately surrounding them where we've identified areas that are, you know, appropriate for growth because of the availability of infrastructure, those kinds of things. So this is an alternative. This is really a policy decision. It doesn't matter from a planning perspective whether or not we keep it in, from my perspective at least, whether we keep it in or not. But it was something that was raised by the public, and so it was, was included as a additional policy.
I mean, I think the map itself sends the message. It's pretty clear.
You could, you could soften the language by starting, ensure that additional land is needed to meet the housing or employment needs of the county when changes to land use designations to support new higher density or intensity uses outside the community areas are being considered.
I would hesitate to use the word ensure, only because it, you know, we're trying to.
Okay, so consider. Consider whether, how's that?
We could say, changes to land use designations to support the creation of higher density or intensify uses outside the community areas shall not be considered unless necessary to meet the housing or employment needs of the county and get rid of all the find findings and.
Also, I'd like to possibly add establish behind outside, so it's stating that it's for established community, it's not.
Right.
Well, the language shall not be considered implies that they can't put it on the agenda.
It's probably even more restrictive.
It is more restrictive, but it's reinforcing the point that was trying to be made.
Where the property, where it's going to be.
I think maybe before we completely finish this one up, that there was language proposed by C-SERC multiple times here someplace. I'm not in love with the language, but it's that to reduce the significant impacts of sprawling build-out on resource and rural values, new development will be directed to areas within or adjacent to existing communities, except where limited exceptions where projects are served by public water, sewer, and adequate road infrastructure, which is addressing a similar issue and is more, more general and more specific in different ways. And I don't think it would belong in this section.
Well, yes, I've, I've read this C-SERC proposal. It looks, if it's effective, like a huge disguised map change.
No.
Well, if you're going to direct new development to areas within or adjacent to existing communities, that means like in it or adjacent to it. There are boundaries, except where you have public water, public sewer, and adequate, you cannot build, you cannot have a development unless you satisfy that criteria. That is a map change.
Isn't this already how the map had, we're going to talk about the map later. So the map has already been developed, predicated on this.
Yes, and this would be an overlay that would be kind of difficult to deal with. I am definitely not in favor of that.
I think, I understand that the map is controlling a lot, but the map allows for far more development than is anticipated.
And so this would then have the effect of limiting that development.
Potentially, or at least encouraging it in, but it says development will be directed, not.
And what does that mean? Limited to? Okay, now we have another litigation breeder.
One thing that was made clear yesterday by C-SERC is that he is talking about multi-unit development, that.
Not individual.
Not talking about individual buildings. But I do think it's, by putting in where projects are served by public water, public sewer, and adequate road infrastructure, at this point, is it realistic to think that there could be a multi-unit development that in an area that isn't served by public water, public sewer, and adequate road infrastructure? I mean, I realize we have on the maps, we have lots that are, multiple lots that are not in areas served by this, but.
I think that we already have plenty of policies in there that talk about adequate public sewer, water, and, and infrastructure.
Well, but it's, in a way, this is a softening of this proposal in that, okay, if you, if you will have water, public sewer, and adequate road infrastructure, then those are within the limited exceptions where you could do a, a development outside of, or not adjacent to an existing community, so that, I mean, that softens this proposal, is all I'm saying. I have a hard time getting my, wrapping around this proposal. Do we really want to take that on right now when we're talking about LU 1.6?
I was actually looking at the wording of this, it's related to what we were just discussing, and maybe instead of using the public water, sewer, and adequate road infrastructure, saying for the limited exceptions where projects are necessary to meet the housing or employment needs of the county. I'm just trying to combine those into something that gives some direction, creates a policy, acknowledges our situation with more land than we need. I don't care for, to reduce the significant impacts of sprawling build-out as an intro, but I think it's a, it's something that we have to address one way or another.
I agree, and I, but I think the C-SERC suggestion is, is not necessarily involving a land use, change of land use designation.
Is this under land use patterns? Definitely discussing patterns.
I know, I know, I'm looking at LU 1.6. If we can combine the two in a.
I agree. So I'm fine with just dumping LU 1.6, which I don't believe is addressing mixed use, which is the topic here of this poll. I don't want to lose the idea that we really want to direct future development to the extent we can to locations close to community centers or community areas. That's another question I had for you, Peter. Some places we say community, sometimes we say community area. Is there something significant about that?
So community is more of a generic term of, you know, what we think of as community. The land use map actually has community area boundaries.
Right, and it's capitalized.
Yes. So, yes, there is a difference.
So Brett?
I like to attend of it, but the verbiage is, I agree with Kelly, that one person could bring litigation and stop the whole, the whole thing, so.
Well, one person can bring litigation on anything. You don't want, you don't want to stick your chin out for.
Right, and I think we all agree this is maybe not a perfect fit here anyway, so perhaps we drop it from this location and keep it in mind as we continue through where it might be a good fit. Is there support for that?
I, I think I'm pretty clear on dropping it.
Well, I think if we can, if we can get that message in without necessarily involving a change to the general plan, I think it's more effective. Yeah, changes to land use designations. I don't know that, it may be a good time to keep discussing the C-SERC and then figure out where, I guess it would fit within land use patterns where we are right now, because, and would fit within the goal that you're, that you've changed it. So maybe we should consider exactly what, what we could do with that, with that proposal and whatever we want.
Let's drop 1.6 and continue to discuss if, I, I see the C-SERC language or some massaging of that language as a better fit for a goal of its own.
Well, it would fit within the goal of LU 1, as you reiterate.
You might also consider, you know, if you feel it's inappropriate under that L1 goal, maybe LU 3?
That's what I thought.
Infrastructure and land use, a pattern of growth and development effectively utilizes the planned provision of infrastructure, facilities, and public services. It's not a perfect fit really anywhere. It's a very sort of generalized policy that sort of permeates all the goals of, of the plan.
Interesting is that C-SERC in the letter fits it under greenhouse gas reductions, but I think one of those two places that we just mentioned would be more appropriate.
I mean, if you look at goal LU dash 3, if you look at goal LU dash 3 and you look at the policies under it, I think the message is there.
I don't think that that message, I think that that is the intention of that whole section, is to kind of reinforce this idea. I don't think it would be a bad idea to have a more blanket statement, not necessarily that exact wording, but.
You look at LU 3.5, adequate infrastructure, facilities, and public services shall be in place or shall be extended or provided as necessary to serve a project as a requirement of the project approval.
Which takes in the last part of the C-SERC, but, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering, the C-SERC proposal by itself, it sounds quite. stringent, but I'm not sure if when you look at it, why, you know, allowing for exemptions where projects are served by public water, public sewer, and adequate road infrastructure, if we're talking about large projects, I think all large projects at this point are going to be, I mean, under LU 3.5, they're going to need to be there.
Exactly. The wording more as a mitigation than as a goal or policy.
Well, it's pretty mandatory, LU 3.5.
No, I'm talking about the CECL language.
Well, I think it's...
Directed at, because it's talking about impacts on resources and rural values.
And 3.5 isn't as explicit as far as public water, public sewer, and road infrastructure, but...
I think 3.5 covers published water, sewer, infrastructure issues pretty well.
So then we're just back down to the question of, okay, new development needs to be within or adjacent to existing communities.
And that is a function of the map. That's exactly what the map is supposed to do.
But the text and the map are complementary of one another. I think we're going to not get too much further with this. Brett, do you have a feeling one way or the other about whether it's worth coming back to this and seeing if we come across a location, or somebody comes up with wording, and reconsider it? But...
There definitely is an overlap from LU 1.6 to Section 3. I'm in agreement with Kelly on this one. It's saying, it's redundant, because this is... Policies on LU 3 is pointing out the exact thing that is intended by LU 1.6.
In terms of infrastructure, yes. Not in terms of direction of development.
But without the infrastructure, you will not have development, so it works hand-in-hand. So I agree with Kelly.
Okay, so then we will not do anything with that right now. Let's go back to the other items that we had. So I think one of the things...
So, I'm sorry. So is the consensus then, or at least the majority, to eliminate 1.6?
Yeah. I think we had already agreed on eliminating 1.6, and then looking to see if there was another way to address it, but at this point, we don't have any consensus on another way to address it.
Whether it's already been addressed, that's the question. I think it... What does the CECL proposal do that isn't already in the plan or in the maps? Maybe it needs to be recognized. Maybe we need to look at what all we have here and perhaps distill it down so that we recognize that this is an interest that we have, that the plan is already taken care of, if it is already taken care of. Anyhow, I think further study...
Yes, I think we... Anybody who's interested in it can stare at it a little more and make a proposal and suggest it.
Or members of the public.
Yes, exactly.
Now that it's clear what our concerns are about it.
So as, I mean, Colleen yesterday mentioned, and Kelly just mentioned, there were a couple items under LU 5, a couple of the policies, I think 5.3 and 5.6.
No, 5.3 is the only one on my radar.
I had noted 5.6. Was that on? Although I don't... I think it was a concern about home businesses that you mentioned, so maybe not quite a fit for 5.6, but... Okay, let's talk about 5.3.
Okay, 5.3 is one of these changes that was proposed in response to a letter, and it proposes to change the word "recognize" to the word "conserve" in the policy that says, now would say, if accepted, "Conserve the county's unique recreational, scenic, cultural, historic, and agricultural resources as strong economic generators, and encourage their retention and expansion." And so the word "recognize" is proposed to get changed to "conserve," and the question is, what does that mean? If you look in one of the dictionaries, it means to keep in a safe or sound state. And so it seems to me that with this change, any project that might affect a scenic or recreational or cultural or agricultural resource could be argued to violate that provision because it's not being conserved. I think it's troublesome and mischievous. It's not needed. Impact 4.1.1, which the response to letter 11-37 refers to, that's where this comes from, already was a less-than-significant impact with no mitigation required. That's at the draft environmental report at page 2-5. I would put it back to the way it was for those reasons.
And what do you understand? Have you looked up in the dictionary what "recognize" means? Is that just give weight to?
I have not, but I don't think it's a litigation breeder like "conserve" is.
Well, if I have in "conserve," that seems to take care of retention, which at the end is just being encouraged. I mean, if you conserve it, why they're being retained, right?
Arguably, if you have to conserve it, you can't do anything with it. Period, done. You have to understand, there are people out there that will take advantage of any ambiguities, if you will, in this plan.
Yes, "recognize" and "encourage" don't have much... I can recognize it by saying, yep, it was there. The "encourage" is a little stronger than that, but still...
Take into account the county's unique...
I agree with Kelly that "conserve" is not the right word.
I know, that's what I'm suggesting, take into account.
Well, I think that word "recognize" implies that. And if you're going to have a project that is going to affect one of these resources, you certainly ought to be understanding that you're losing something. And that's the message this sends.
I'm just looking to see what the other items around there mention. I'm not a fan of "conserve." I'm more comfortable with "recognize," although I don't find it all that strong of a direction. I also think if we don't have significant impact anyway here, maybe this is not a place to spend a lot of time.
Well, I see the problems that Commissioner Booster pointed out, now that you pointed them out. And I understand the switch from "recognize" to "conserve" was to make it stronger, and of course, I fully agree that these sort of resources are very important to the county, but I think the term "recognize" serves the purpose here of making sure that that is, that they are taken into account when making these decisions.
Peter, do you remember any?
You know, I think Kelly brings up a good point. You know, the rest of that policy does talk about encouraging their retention.
Right.
So, you know, the original language is probably fine, and consultation with council, sort of pretty common language in many general plans, so...
Okay.
So we're back to "recognize."
We're back to "recognize."
There are other suggested changes on the land use element implementation measures, LU-4H and LU-6A. I don't have a problem with either one of them.
Just as an additional thought to our discussion yesterday on the community design guidelines, and actually the whole section about compatible community character and design, and it just pains me to even say this, but should we consider having some limit on the size of a project that could escape public review? And I don't know how many places this would even be a potential situation, but where you have a project that already is zoned properly, already has the right general plan designation, so it could just move forward, but it... And the design would not require any kind of community review. But it seems like if it's of a large enough scale project, that it could change the character of the community. Perhaps we want to provide a mechanism, so require a discretionary permit and require an opportunity for the public to comment on it. I think this was brought up about Dollar General, that they did have community meetings, and were given an opportunity to comment on it. As an architect, that doesn't really thrill me, but I think that the community's been very clear that they are looking for opportunities to weigh in on something that could change the look and feel of their community. That's just open for discussion.
I think it depends on the community. And we do have some community plans included here. I know there's a lot of support for including others, and there's a lot of reasons not to do it at this time, but I think that's where those issues ought to be taken up, because every community's different.
Right, so I'm saying absent community design guidelines that would require it anyway, but it could be incorporated into the community plans.
And it's also probably more of a zoning issue, to come up with what those standards are, what's that threshold? You know, where we currently have the plan development overlay in certain communities.
Makes me cry. I'm going to cry right there.
There's, you know, people that really support it, people that really hate it. What are those issues?
So more...
You know, it's really ultimately a policy call, if you want to try to, you know, establish something where, you know, it could be a policy that says something to the effect that, you know, the county will include, you know, a threshold of, you know, its zoning ordinance for the commercial development that would require a public review or something along those lines. It'd be difficult to sort of try to establish that threshold right now, pulling something out of thin air to come up with what that threshold is. And I think it may vary from community to community, so...
That's what I was just going to say. I think it might more appropriately fall in the community plans.
And I think my suggestion for LU 4.11 survived in some form.
It did.
Okay, so that we at least are providing a chance for community participation.
Okay. So the last thing that I had on my list was for us to just take a look at the future specific plan description, because this was left out of our discussion yesterday. And then that's going to lead us right into the map.
On this page, Peter, then you have the asterisk seat below for details of density and intensity of use. Does that seat below exist yet?
It does in my office. I forgot to print out.
Oh, that's what you did.
I might rush to get everything ready for this morning. And that is, you know, just have some specifics, you know, this number of residential units, this amount of commercial area, these numbers of lodging units, that kind of detail. I can get that, you know, if you need it, but it's just, you know, identifying what was proposed when these, the designation of these sites were considered by the commission a year and a half ago, two years ago. And it wasn't a clean fit with, we didn't want to designate the whole area mixed use because that would have a much broader area of, you know, much more intensive development than this. So this was sort of a compromise of not knowing, not having a project in front of us, but a determination that these were appropriate locations for some type of future development along the lines of what the landowners were suggesting. And it's a way to limit that rather than put a mixed use designation or some higher-density residential, because both areas were being promoted as a mixed use type of project.
So if I... I probably don't understand, but if I understand things correctly, the purpose of the future specific plan designation is we don't want to designate this as resource development because then you'd have to have some change to the general plan in order to make it a development, and yet this is an area that at least appears that it would be appropriate for a development, but it isn't time yet to determine exactly what type of the development it's going to be, and therefore we have this designation. Is that...
Yes, and in part also restricts the development to, you know, they have to come in with a specific plan. They would... It limits it to what was identified on the missing page, the footnote, and if it's helpful, I can look at that. In a way, it's no different than any other area that we have identified as suitable for future development, other than what we think is appropriate for this location is somewhat unique in that, you know, for example, the Sanguinetti property, which is the triangular-shaped orange piece on the bottom, that they were talking about wanting to do some type of resort development. We don't have a resort development, land use designation. They said, well, we would limit our project to a certain number of residential units, a certain number of lodging units, some commercial area, which the commission decided that that was appropriate for this location and consistent with all the other goals and policies of the plan. But in order, rather than say, okay, the whole area is appropriate for low-density residential, that would have many more residential units than what they had presented to the commission, so we'll put this land use designation on it to further restrict it, but these are the types of use. This is a limit. to further restrict it, but these are the types of use, so this is a limits. You'll come back with a project, a specific plan, subdivision map, um, you know, whatever entitlements they need to actually develop it, but it has to be within the constraints of what the commission saw back in 2016.
And the planning commission wants to recognize it as appropriate for development, but you couldn't give it, it's a mixed use, so you can't just call it commercial.
Right.
Right.
And we actually have a, you know, the, the mixed use designation, but that has, would have a much higher potential for both commercial as well as residential development than this proposal.
Right, if the community center.
Right.
Designation, right, and it's not necessarily a community center.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else from anybody before we let Peter go ahead and introduce the map?
Actually, I had a question, um, on LU five two, which is related to...
Yes.
The, uh, point that you brought up with LU five point six.
Yep.
Um, what, my question is, what type of home-based businesses are we talking about here? Or, um, I don't know, there's a big, uh, I've seen lately, there's a big push of home-based cooks or, uh, place, uh, things like that. Is that what we're talking about here, or...
I think it doesn't limit it.
Yeah.
I think the limitation is just by saying compatible with neighborhoods. I think we did hear public comments, and, and I know I've heard them in the past, that it can sometimes be more onerous than it seems like it needs to be for a home-based business with very little impact on the neighbors, and I think this is trying to say that we recognize that home-based businesses could be a good thing.
And, and the, the details, again, would be worked out through any kind of zoning ordinance amendment that we would look at. What we're saying as a policy, we want to encourage them, and if we want, uh, and it's compatible, um, with the community, with the neighborhood, so that would be the, you know, the directives that the county has when we start developing ordinance and modifying our existing, um, home occupation, home-based business ordinances, is that, you know, okay, we need to make sure there are provisions that, you know, yes, we want to encourage the businesses, as we, you know, the directive of the plan, one of the overarching goals of the plan is to stimulate our economy. Um, how can we do that while maintaining our environmental quality, you know, the quality of life in residence, neighborhood, resident community? And so, um, you know, the, the general idea, you know, some, some modification of this language to make it clear that we're, whatever program, whatever ordinance that we develop that encourages this, also, you know, doesn't go so far as to adversely impact, you know, the neighbors to, to home-based businesses.
Isn't that something we should have in an implementation measure? Because those implementation measures that are cited in five point two don't apply to, uh, uh, home-based businesses.
LU five, a dash five C is home businesses, that's, I think, maybe that should be under five. LU dash five C is a measure for home businesses.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And maybe that belongs under five point six as an implementation. It's not listed under...
Yeah. A voice from the public, yeah. Okay, I wonder if we want to have cautionary language in LU dash five C about effects on neighbors, neighborhoods? Is that built in?
I think it's covered in the five two, compatible with neighborhoods.
I mean, it is, what I'm worried about, I mean, I, I see what the, the ten is here. You know, if the guy that has a lawn care business or something, he's based out his garage, and he hooks up his trailer, pulls out every day, that's fine, but my point, uh, what I'm worried about is the shade tree mechanic that invites seventeen people, and he has eighteen cars or fifteen cars sitting outside his house for three weeks in various stages of repair. That's what I'm trying to avoid. Home daycare, you know, home daycare or something, that's, that's perfectly fine, and that's acceptable now, but what I'm worried about is where we should start running into these issues, make...
Before we got into those on a daily basis.
But I think that would be covered by the update of that portion of the zoning code. So, Brett, what would you like to see in here?
I think maybe putting something in LU five C is a good thing, because, I mean, that's what the, uh, board would be looking at, revise the zoning ordinance to expand the potential for home occupation, for home business and, uh, level options, um, while recognizing possible impacts to the neighbors and the community. Would be a policy, I mean, an implementation measure.
Or minimizing impacts on neighbors or anything along those lines. Do we want to let Peter just modify that language slightly and bring it back?
Yeah, yeah. While minimizing impacts to neighbors.
Okay.
Just add that to the end of that sentence.
Yeah.
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
While minimizing impacts to neighbors.
Yeah, that sounds, uh, I feel more comfortable with that.
Okay, let's look at the map.
And start us off by saying, just what are we doing with the map today?
Well, I, I think that's probably one of the broader underlying questions. What do you want to do? Um, you know, we have, there's, you know, the attachment two that has a few sort of minor corrections. Um, I don't think any of those are necessarily controversial, but we can talk about those. Uh, there are obviously the issue of the future, um, specific plan areas have been brought up by the public, um, and I know there's at least one individual that had come, contacted me about, um, wanting to see a change to property that he owns, um, and I don't know if anyone else in the audience that wants to address, um, other specific map changes. I think that if we're going to get into a wholesale change to the map along the lines of one of the alternatives, um, I think probably the best thing to do would be to sort of give us some general direction. We need to revisit the map on a wholesale basis, we'll need to include some discussion of that in the final EIR, um, and I think that probably would be best, rather than to have staff time used to, you know, at this point in time, to make a lot of changes of the map. Uh, that would just be a recommendation to the board, that we really modify the general plan, land use map, uh, to be more consistent with one of the alternatives, and take that to the board, and have the board decide, yes, that's what we want to do, because that's gonna take, take some time and resources to do that. We would then bring back a revised map. I know that Commissioner Booster had some concerns about, uh, property owners who are sort of relying on this map, um, and they, you know, whether, what kind of public notice is provided to them, uh, so those are some of the issues we would need to, to work out as we, you know, with who worked it through the map.
Well, I agree that we shouldn't, at this point, say, oh, let's, let's do the DOF alternative and let's get to it. I, I, I think your thought of getting direction from the board is too far, is we recommend a certain direction, see if they agree, and then hassle about the actual map. So, we're really talking today about these few things that have come up, that, uh, raise specific issues with the map as it exists.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
So, I, I think that we'll take some public comment, just so that we gather that information. We know that we are going to discuss this again next Wednesday night, most likely, because that's when members of the public might be able to attend where unable to be here today. I agree with everybody that today, we're not gonna sit here and start marking parcels for changes, but I do think we should go ahead and take a look at the, the specific plan areas, discuss those, and there were a couple of letters, one from properties in Forest Meadows, and, and then some sawmill adjacent properties, and we should just look at those, so... Does the commission have anything they want to comment on before we talk to the public?
Well, with respect to the map, the staff report is very specific about the changes that would be coming up, um, in these hearings on the map. We've all, I think, decided to go with the project alternative. That is the map. Now...
For now, we have decided.
Yes, for now.
Right, and that doesn't preclude minor changes to the map. It does preclude major changes.
The, um, the staff report does include these minor changes to the map. It does not include sawmill, and it does not include Sanguinetti. Far as I know, those landowners have no notice that, that there's a move afoot, or the commission's going to consider cha, that, the change to this future specific plan designation on those properties. I do not think that there should be any discussion or, or consideration of those issues without specific, reasonable, timely notice to those landowners.
So, when you're doing a general plan, a county-wide general plan, generalized public notice is legally sufficient, um, but from a policy standpoint, it's certainly within the planning commission's prerogative to suggest that specific notice to individual property owners should be provided, where, um, that's, we're considering some fairly significant changes, we've gone through a lengthy hearing process previously, they felt that they had, you know, um, you know, a decision had been made, um, so, but it's not legally required, but, you know, again, it's a policy call by the commission.
I would agree, we shouldn't make the change, but I don't see any problem with discussing it or having the public weigh in with their comments. I think that we should take a vote to change those parcels designation today, without letting those property owners know.
So, I can certainly contact them and let them know that it'd be considered maybe at the, uh, Wednesday night, Wednesday evening, the next hearing.
And encourage the CERC to be there also. Um, I would, I would like to hear the full debate on, on that issue, and I certainly think having the property owners say is a part of having a full debate.
Correct, we're, we're not trying to do something behind someone's back here.
No.
Okay, so, with that...
Who would like to start?
Colleen Platt, My Valley Springs, and the Calabres Plowing Coalition. I don't have anything prepared, I didn't know we would be able to talk about the map. I thought we were done with talking with land use. So, um, I do, would like to hear a discussion about the future specific plans also. I think there's been a lot of valid concerns raised about the concept of pre-entitlement, and, um, I would like to see a full discussion of that, and as you say, continue it to another public hearing for everybody to be able to weigh in on that. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Greg Popovich. I need to know if I'm speaking at the right time. I have, uh, some concerns about the designation that my land's being proposed to, to have. Is this the proper time? I just, I just got in here for the public comment.
Yeah, we just mentioned you, so...
Well, you did, you did, well, that's, that's wonderful.
May I suggest this, maybe we, we take a revised procedure of, of having staff present what staff feels about this, and then give Mr. Popovich a chance to respond to that? Um, just so that it's kind of our, our usual procedure, but somewhat revised.
I, uh, that's up to you, Peter. I, I think we might as well hear what he has to say, and you can...
Yeah, I think at this point in time, it's, you know, time for public testimony, we can come back, and we can discuss then, you know, the various suggestions and requests that are made.
Mr. Popovich, I'm glad you showed up.
Well, thank you, I, I saw that you were doing your normal board meeting this morning. I didn't know that I was gonna be on the agenda, so...
Not specifically, we're just discussing the land use map, but, uh, we mentioned that we had received a couple of letters, so...
Okay, yeah, I was on the, the list to receive information, and it was coming to me, and somehow I was randomly removed from the, the information list that was talking about the meetings, and all I kept getting was cannabis meeting after cannabis meeting, and I, so I just thought that we were in, in remission there for a minute. But anyways, on, on the property, it's, uh, two hundred and fifty-eight acres in total. Um, I bought it in two thousand and sixteen, met with Peter Maurer, met with one of the past supervisors, we discussed the, um, issues of the property and how it was at one point zoned or entitled for three hundred and thirteen lots, um, which is probably the highest and best use for that property. Uh, since that point, the map's expired, and I have, I do not have interest in developing three hundred and thirteen lots out there. I've looked at the surroundings, and I've looked at the, the information that goes out with development, and I don't, I didn't see that it was adequate, um, and I agreed with, with, uh, with Peter Maurer, that the entrance and exit isn't sufficient to have that type of density in Forest Meadows. So, what I did is I, I hired a forensic title person, and we went through the property and found out that there's actually nine legal parcels out there. And so, what I was going through the process of doing, I bought the property with my daughters, they're both in college right now, and instead of getting student loans, we decided to work them through the process, and they would get involved in a real estate transaction with me, and we'd earn enough money to where it would pay for the college and, and everything else, and so this was the, the project that we chose. So, in finding the nine lots, we were going to do, and we've submitted maps, and we've spent a significant amount of money already on doing this, to do property line adjustments to make very nice, livable, buildable lots in that area. It's on lava cap, so I'm not sure if you're aware of the area, but as far as an economic standpoint, to rezone it to resource production, there's no resources that are gonna be produced out there that I can see. If you pull it up on the satellite, you'll be able to see that there's vast areas in there that have no growth whatsoever on them, and I, I even had a cattle guy out there, and he goes, no, um, it's not gonna work for, for any type of, of resources for the cattle. Um, what I have done out there, spent well into the six figures on creating fire breaks for the Forest Meadows subdivision. I also think that the Forest Meadows subdivision's an incredible subdivision that is just been put on hold somehow, um, as far as development out there, there's a number of vacant lots, but in doing that, we, we took the entire land and have actually gone out there and removed a lot of the fuel for the fires, and I've had cow fire out there, I've been working with the Forest Service, and working with a number of entities on that property in order to create a, a really good environment for a residential project, that being the nine lots, configured however we configure them. Uh, right now, the, the way that we are looking at configuring those lots is into the, the smallest, that there'll be is three acre parcels, and not adding any additional parcels, but to reconfigure the parcels that are already in existence, to have on that one ridge at the lava cap where there's no, no value whatsoever other than residential, to have those lots up there, and it's hard to, to point out, but to have those as three acre parcels up top, and, um, that's why in my letter, you see that I would have no, no problem with a down zone to a three acre parcel, but to... And from a planning perspective, it seems a little bit harsh to go from one extreme to the exact opposite extreme when there's no economic value that will be left on the property at that point. You have my letter on the rest of that. Like I said, I didn't know that I'd have a timing thing in there. But, do you have any questions of me or anything?
When you say one extreme to the other, what, the first extreme was that when there were 313 lots on this nine lot?
Yeah. To take it from the intended use of the master plan of adding those additional lots, there's still Unit 5 over there that's owned by somebody else, they're still in the development process of that, but to take it from a master planned use of 313 lots and turn it into resource production at 40 to 160 acre parcels, just, it's a huge extreme.
Peter, could you, just stay right there for a second. Could you show us?
So, the property that we're talking about is this large parcel here, where the arrow is, this parcel here, correct? This one, and then the smaller parcels here, here, and here.
And then one other one up in the center.
And down there, or...
No, it's up around, by the, you see the red section there? Yeah, right in that area there.
Right, right there. So, as you indicated, this was previously approved as Unit 3, 3 and 3A, Forest Meadows. That map did expire, and when the planning commission considered this previously, we talked about the concerns of the access, emergency egress, and the fire hazards for the area. If the, we have some different land use, and this is the resource production area here. This piece right here is working lands. These other pieces here are Logan City Residential, which allows 60 units per acre, and I think that's about a six-acre parcel if I'm not mistaken, and this is maybe a one and a half, two-acre parcel here. There is, if the desire is only to reconfigure these lots, do a lot line adjustment, and not actually develop this out as, you know, some type of future subdivisions, I think we can work with that, even though we already have existing legal parcels, or, you know, as long as we don't create something that's smaller than what's already existing, and that would be this smaller parcel here. I would be concerned about designating the whole area for three-acre parcels, because what we're saying is this is appropriate for that level of density, and, you know, previous Commission's decision was, no, it's not because of the lack of access and the fire hazard in the region, and I would concur with that determination by the Commission. So, I think, Mr. Popovich, have you gotten certificates of compliance on those nine?
Yes.
So, we have legally created parcels, legal parcels we discussed yesterday.
Legal lots.
And, you know, there is provisions in the MAP Act and in our county code to reconfigure those lots, consistent with zoning and easements necessary to serve the property. So, I don't believe that we would need to change the land use designation to accomplish what he wants to do. Now, if he wants to do some kind of further subdivision in the future, you know, that's a different story.
What about development as residential lots?
Well, residential lots are permitted in any of these land use designations.
Okay.
And so, when we have a series of parcels, we can do a lot line adjustment. In this case, because there are more than four, it actually would require a parcel map, though.
And the minimum parcel size could become an issue.
Yeah, it would become an issue.
So, is this out Forest Meadows Drive?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this where the 40-acre lots are out there?
No, it's actually Oakwood, Vine Maple, Forest Meadows Drive, all connect right to it, and it's right there.
Oh, it's closer into the subdivision?
All the contiguous properties around it are zoned R1.
So, you see, here's Highway 4, this yellow band here, the main entrance.
Well, Forest Meadows Drive turns into Forest Meadows Road, and becomes the large parcels that are not really part of Forest Meadows. Are you actually within the boundary of the Forest Meadows subdivision?
Yes.
So, here's the entrance to the highway here. This is the golf course here.
Yeah, okay.
So, it's south of the golf course.
So, it sounded as everything would be consistent with the designation that he's concerned about until you got to, oh, but maybe there are problems.
Well, I was thinking that there was fairly recent change in, not fairly recent, it's been several years ago now, the change in state law that limits the number of parcels you can include in a lot line adjustment to four. Previously, it was an unlimited number, and so, it would require a, actually, it would require a subdivision map to do it for nine lots.
And can you do it?
But I think we could...
I'm planning on doing it in phases, so the first map's already been submitted, and is already, I've already received comments on the first map. It's been redrawn and resubmitted for the first batch of property line adjustments. It's only for four, and then we'll go into the next after, we'll go in phases.
Would that be consistent with the state law?
No, Peter, you... Sequential ones, the second one would require a map. So, I guess the only hesitation, I have a problem with what he's proposing, trying to figure out the effective way to do that, without inappropriately designating the entire area as appropriate for three-acre parcels, and I think, you know, the concern is given, you know, the fire hazards, the lack of access, you know, the growth projections that we've talked about previously, having that level of density really is inappropriate in this location. And maybe what we can do is identify where specifically those parcels are going to be proposed, and we could, you know, if you're inclined to allow that to happen, sort of carve out that area, say, okay, here is, here's how we're going to reconfigure these parcels, and then look at it in that way.
It's a future-specific plan. I mean, that's really what you're talking about.
Well, I was just sort of thinking about that on a very, very small scale.
Yes. I think part of the difference here is that the maps have already been, the first phase of maps have already been submitted under the current general plan. So, depending on what your timeframe is, I'm not sure what the issue will be.
I've got, if it helps, there's one parcel out there that's going to be 111 acres, and if you wanted to zone that resource preserve, that would be fine. There's access things that I have to look into, and that's why I've created the lots the way I have. One lot up top is 30-some-odd acres. So, there's only three lots that will be, well, in the most recent map, they're five-acre parcels, so there's three of them that are fives, one that's a 10, one that's a 18, I believe, and so, there, I can show you the map, I don't, unfortunately, I don't, I might have it, no, I don't have it with me. There's certain areas that that zoning would be adequate, but there's only a certain area of the property that's conducive to having development. I have access to sewer, water, everything right there, and at the top, and that's at the top there. When you get down towards the bottom, towards the bottom square right above the icons, that area there, that's all staying large parcel, because to get access to that, I'm coming through, and we're going to be creating the access, it'll actually be, it'll take another leg, it'll be made larger in order to have a larger parcel there. The other one down at the bottom, I think it's 32 acres. So, I mean, there's one little section that can be zoned for five acres that runs contiguous to the subdivision. The rest of it can be 10-acre minimums.
Or 20 or 40.
That will, that will make access almost impossible to some of them. So, by having a 100-acre parcel, I have access, if I take it down to 20, oh, no, excuse me.
You can always have greater.
Yeah, okay.
So, it sounds like maybe he needs to come in and talk to you guys.
Yeah, maybe what we need to do is sort of table this for the time being, and I can look at the map and figure out a way that allows what he proposes to continue, you know, progress without increasing the density in this region other than what's already there.
If that's possible, that would be, nothing, nothing's been decided today, other than you and he should get together.
Well, that's, that's all I was looking for. I just wanted, wanted to try to make it to where it's not, the zoning's not implemented, and then I'm just...
Well, as of now, the designations are remaining what they are, but maybe within those designations...
But his map has, his first map has already been submitted, so it will be reviewed under the current general plan, correct?
Correct.
So, it's really looking at what that next map.
Right.
And, I'm just looking to see if this can be accommodated without changing the number of parcels.
Yes. Yeah, I don't, I don't need, I don't, I'm not looking for any more parcels, I'm not going to do any future development. If there's restrictions on it, it doesn't matter to me. I'm going to develop nine usable, functional parcels out of something that has a couple of parcels that are just not usable or functional at this point. It needs to have additional land added on to them in order to make them useful and functional.
Well, I wish you and Peter Maurer luck and success.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your consideration of this. Also, Peter, should I just give you a call to set up a time, in all your spare time that you have? All right, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the map?
For the last two years, I've been coming to these, not planning meetings, but supervisors' meetings over the pot issue, and there's a map out there that's been there for all that time, maybe long before that, and to be right at the cusp of approving the general plan and talking about changing the map at this point, seems like the rug is being pulled out from under certain parties, and I don't think that it's right. Also, yesterday, they had the script of the plan that you guys were changing, and it was very light print. I was not able to read it, and I would have liked to have. Prior to these hearings, I went to the library, and they said that the copy of the EIR and the general plan was there, it was a very thick volume, but that wasn't the latest one. So, they put me over in the computer and let me have extra time, and it took forever to get from one page to the other, when you're talking about that many pages, and to maneuver back and forth. And so, you try to inform yourself, and try to figure out what's going on, and it's very difficult, and I feel almost as ignorant as before I started trying to read what they had at the library and attending the meetings so far, and now people are talking about changing the map. The map's been out there for two years, and the public has assumed, at least I have, that that's the way it was going to be when the general plan was accepted, and it is different than what my land is zoned for. And I've been concerned especially about the pot growing, and the terrain in the area that I live where there's a lot of rock, and, and I've seen water trucks go down the road and dump water along the road, or on the road, just before it rains, and you wonder what's in those trucks? What are they dumping? I understand there's runoff from pot grows, and it's a very great concern to me, and that, you know, I have a neighbor that has 23 acres, well, if they're going to allow pot growing on more than 20 acres, then I could have it right next door. And I've been coming to these meetings, you know, with good faith, that that map was okay. I don't know what you guys are doing, but I really think that the public trust is an important thing, and I don't have a heck of a lot of trust.
I just want to say I commend you for your diligence in trying to get, make stuff at the library make sense. Appreciate that.
Just for the record, you know, all of the documents have been available for public view at our, at the County Planning Department office. Happy to help anyone who needs to navigate through them.
Any further public comments? Okay, commissioners, any discussion on the map?
Well, the ones that are included in Attachment 3 to the staff report, I think are, as far as I'm concerned, not controversial.
I agree.
And I'm assuming the owners are okay with what's proposed here?
Yes, and most of these were as a result of changes made by the owners for a variety of purposes. You know, the Arora family wanted to eliminate the specific plan for their area, the people that came in and applied for lot line adjustments, you know, the applications made, and it's just sort of conforming the map to those changes that we've already approved. The only one that we probably didn't really discuss with the owners, but really won't affect them, is, are the, that number of 50-some lots up near Railroad Flat, where there are primarily two-acre parcels. It just makes more sense to recognize what's there rather than designated as working lands, but it's really a mobile home subdivision and lots, smaller existing lots. So, we haven't reached out and notified them directly, but it doesn't really adversely affect them. It just more accurately reflects what's, what's on the ground.
I don't see them as controversial, why?
I think it's fine.
Okay.
Assuming the owners are still happy with this, yes. So, I, other than that, really, the specific plans is the big issue, and I don't know that we can have any substantive discussion right now anyway.
No, I suggest we put off all discussion of that until we hear...
Till Wednesday night.
Interesting party.
I think, so perhaps we should take a break. I know that nobody likely anticipated moving on to the circulation element, which I think is next, right?
Well, we do have some suggestions from Commissioner Latish.
Yes.
Very, very few.
Right, so, but we want to go ahead and get those handed out, and give people a chance to get a look at them, and also just collect their own thoughts before...
And I guess it makes sense at this point in time, there are three different handouts that you had, and you might as well pass all three of those out at this point in time, so either at lunch break, or whenever we get to the...
I'd only want to do that if we think we're going to be getting to Conservation and Open in open space today.
Okay.
I'm concerned to get up around that.
Well, again, this is one large hearing.
Yeah.
So we are in a public hearing now.
Okay, that's fine.
There's no reason to delay it, have to get out unless you just feel like you want to.
Yeah, no, I'd like people to look at it like you're in, Peter.
Here they come. So should we take about a 20 minute break and get these passed out? Is everyone okay with that, commissioners?
Yes.
So 10 to 11, would anybody?
10 to 11.
So let's go ahead and get started on the circulation element and we'll start with Peter's introduction.
Before we do that, I just want to point out that I did during the break run over and get a copy of the asterisk, the explanation of the densities, just threw copies to all the commissioners as well as set on the railing there for the public. So when it comes back for discussion next week, everyone has that. All right, so circulation element. This element talks about, you know, general circulation requirements. We did not have a lot of changes to this one. Going to go through quickly to see where, you know, there were a few minor amendments. One thing I wanted to point out, Policy C 2.2 looks different than the way the VIR mitigation measure was drafted. It just, it seems sort of redundant to say after each one of those bullet points that LUSD was acceptable. So instead I rephrase that to put that in the body of the text and then just listed the roads where LUSD was acceptable. So it may look different, but it says the same thing. We did include the, that these applied to roadways outside the City of Angels camp. The city had commented on this, that they have their own standards and we shouldn't be imposing our standards on the city. So we had a couple other edits. C 2.15, I think we, that was something that was overlooked when the board reviewed the planning commission's recommendation and they directed staff to take that policy out with one of the few edits that the board had made. And that was missed when we published the document. So that's just following board directive. And then I just renumbered the following, made a minor edit to that policy. There are a few other sort of minor edits, but I don't think they're necessarily substantive. Make sure there's nothing and they weren't, there wasn't really anything else that was substantive from the EIR. So I just tried to go through. We did make some edits on some of the measures and policies based on comments from, comment letters in the EIR. Some of them were included as mitigation measures, others were just simply to help to clarify things. So unless you have any questions of need, open up for public comment.
I have to point out that last night, my second question, my mind had typed Highway 26 on the first line of the second question, but my fingers somehow typed Highway 12.
Hello.
Hi.
We're talking about roads, right? That's why I'm here. Joyce Tackle, MyValleySprings.com and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. In 1985, court case decisions in concern citizens of Calaveras County versus Board of Supervisors dealt with the lack of road funding. The county lost that case. In fact, the judge used the word abracadabra when referring to funding. He thought that was interesting. In 2004, citizens took legal action again to get road impact mitigation fees instituted after pushing for six years. Now there is over $9 million in the RIM account plus accrued interest. I am upset that there is no mention of existing deficiencies in the road system and no acknowledgement of the funding circulation backlog of $672 million. Last night, I decided to check circulation elements for Amador, Butte, and Placer Counties to see if I was off base. I found confirmation that I was correct in my expectations. Amador addressed capacity needs, funding constraints. Butte gave details from their RTP regarding specific planned improvements and acknowledged lack of funding. From Placer County, quote, "As with other public facilities, development impact fees are a potentially significant means of providing roadway improvements to serve future growth. However, because such fees are not available for solving existing deficiencies, potential funding of improvements to address the existing deficiencies will need to rely heavily upon local sources which are already committed to existing programs." That's Nevada County, Volume 1, Page 411. "I am requesting that more detail of existing conditions on roadways and funding deficiencies be disclosed in this general plan. This information is critical for decision makers, developers, business owners, and residents. The Calaveras RTP contains much of this information." All right, I raised that question several times in my comments on the EIR and they were blown off each time or not acknowledged. And I think that's the 800 pound gorilla in the room. And we just need to understand what the existing situation is so we can make better decisions and realistic decisions about how we're going to move forward. Now, Mr. Lash, I really appreciate you bringing up the Highway 26. The county has used Highway 26 as a county road for the 44 years that I have lived here and they have caused choices to be diminished. You couldn't go in there with a frontage road or anything right now because so much development has been allowed. And Caltrans and the county must get to the point where they can work together so they can move this county forward. This thing of butting heads all the time has got to stop. And I think this general plan can say something to direct the county to do that. And I don't know if it means, I'm sure there are MOUs with Caltrans and I'm sure there's a relationship with Caltrans, but Highway 26 is a sore spot. The first archived article on the MyValleySprings.com website was Patty Shire's writing in the Sierra Sentinel with Cal, an article relaying a meeting, talking about exactly that. That's how long this has been going on. If Valley Springs or the county is going to get in a better place so that businesses will want to come here, they have to, the county has to have a better relationship with Caltrans and they've got to deal with Highway 26. It's a pain in the butt, I know it, but it isn't going to go away. And the growth pressure is terrible down there. So we've got to do something. But the "we" is the county and Caltrans. That's not people, that's county, Caltrans. And I would appreciate any mention that can be put in the general plan that will be a policy or direction to encourage, or however strongly you want to put it, for the county to develop that relationship with Caltrans and let's get on with it.
And you're concerned about Highway 26 between San Marquinhoun boundary and Valley Springs?
Yep. And that includes, when I moved here, the real estate agent that dealt with us, who was a supervisor up in the hill, that was in '74, he showed us, my husband and I, a map of the bypass of Valley Springs. Who knew? So that was '74 and here we are.
We talked about the 800 pound gorilla, but I missed what the 672.
That is a deficit for projects as noted in the RTP document. That's how bad it is. It got to the point where they pulled some projects off the list and put them in an index in the back of the book saying, oh, we'll deal with that later. Those projects were never dealt with. So they were taken out of the figures, out of the data and put in another location so that you don't even know they're there. It's, I'm sorry, I've been doing this a long time and reading the documents for a long time and we have an 800 pound gorilla in our living room.
So on that, why you think that the general plan should at least indicate, find funding to fund the projects that the county has.
I'll tell you where the funding is going to come from.
Well, just a sec.
Okay.
Are we talking about funding for projects that the county has already recognized or needed?
They, those projects are listed on some list somewhere because that was referenced in the RTP. So those projects are known, yes. And I haven't even talked about the 16 bridges, many of which are scoured, but anyway, that's another whole thing. What I want to see is, you can't ask developers to fix what the county has allowed to happen. The developers are only going to pay for what their projects caused, their impact their projects caused. But nobody wants to bite the bullet to talk about sales tax, gas tax, and raising the TOT, which has been done. Some of the things have been done, but the people have to vote on it. But they're not going to vote on it. They're not going to vote that money in unless the county can prove that it's done absolutely everything it can do to get whatever funding is out there and then show that they have a will to fix this. But you've already had a presentation here recently about housing and how our housing values are $150,000 lower than other communities. Businesses aren't lining up to come in here, are they? So that's the price of not dealing with, and not just roads, other areas of infrastructure. That's the price. That's the price.
And on your other point.
Yes.
With working with Caltrans and Highway 26, that would be to coordinate access and usage of Highway 26?
If I, yes, you could say that. I would be satisfied if the county would work with Caltrans just to come to a functional relationship. I'm not saying there's winners and losers. Let's both work together to move us forward. Caltrans would go whoopee instead of doing this, butting heads. Sorry, this is something I really care about.
Colleen Plattigan, My Valley Springs and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Joyce brought up a couple of things that tie into what I'm talking about, both Caltrans and funding and mitigation measures. And perhaps, you know, Peter can answer this. It may be in the general plan already, I'm not sure, but Caltrans wrote a comment letter on the EIR. And one of their suggestions has to do with the amount of mileage on our roads and funding and things like that. And I read somewhere this morning, and I've read so many documents, I couldn't find it again, but I read somewhere that Calaveras County has a higher number of people traveling on our roads to work outside the county than seven of the surrounding counties. So we have a lot of people on our roads, using our roads. And Caltrans had a suggestion in their comment letter, having to do with mitigating those number of miles and funding. And I'll just read it because I'm not Caltrans, so I'll just have to read it, I can't summarize this. "Caltrans believes the county could benefit if this general plan update addresses SB 743 related policies such as identifying any areas eligible to relieve streamlining for VMT analysis, VMT thresholds for land use projects, support for land use development, and transportation projects that minimize vehicle miles traveled, and support for identifying transportation demand management measures and other mechanisms to reduce or mitigate vehicle miles traveled. It is suggested that Calaveras County work with the Regional Transportation Planning Agency, work with Caltrans and other interested parties on technical aspects of SB 743 implementation such as VMT calculation and analysis, potential programmatic measures to mitigate the miles traveled on a countywide basis." And the last sentence is, "Note that SB 743 implementation work is eligible for funding by Caltrans planning grants."
Is that a Caltrans letter that was replied to in the final?
I assume so, but you know, I didn't have the time to research and I'm hoping maybe the planning department knows whether it was addressed or whether anything like this was included because it sounds like a good source to address concerns about the miles traveled, VMT, SB 743, which is here, it's coming up and needs to be addressed. So maybe you could have a discussion about that.
I remember reading that letter.
I remember reading it.
I don't remember exactly what's responsible.
Yeah, so anyway, thank you.
I, is this specific to state roads? Is this specific to state roads?
This is specific to the circulation element, which would be all of the roads, state and county roads.
Well, I attended a meeting at the Rancho Calaveras Clubhouse about, not too long ago, about the road conditions there which are deteriorating really badly. And the Public Works Head was there with a presentation, a lot of very intricate computer readouts on a, like that. And there were a question and answer period and the audience was very, very angry. And a lot of them were very, very old and had difficulty walking. And you could tell that they were very stressed over the conditions of the roads and promises of the roads being fixed and not being fixed, which goes back to the county. And the Public Works Head ignored the supervisor, the previous supervisor's question about two roads that were slated to be repaired. And the excuse was that we're not going to repair those because they're too far gone and we're not going to do anything right now except fill in potholes. And in the meantime, the supervisor was standing there waiting to be called on and the Public Works Head took questions all through the audience and kept saying, "I'll get back to you, Clyde." And it sends a message of intimidation to people in the public because who wants to be treated demeaningly like that? And I personally take exception to be given the runaround about things. And I personally take exception to be given the runaround about things. And it is...they're...these people are given training how to get around the public and their legitimate concerns. And that is one of the reasons that our roads are deteriorating, because people are not honest with each other. And that's what we need, is we need more honesty, and then we can get justice.
Can I use any additional time I might have left to say something?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I was at that Rancho meeting, and I heard the Public Works presentation, and I thought the director did a fine job of answering everybody's question, and I do think he answered the question that the previous speaker was referred to. And I have my notes from the meeting, and if she wants to ask me about it, I think I could find that. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come up and speak? Okay, I guess it's time for us to talk again. I...Colleen, I did find that there was a response in the EIR that says the county does intend to work with Caltrans on...oh, Joyce, the two of you together on this issue. Yeah.
Good. That's really important. It's in the EIR?
Yes.
Oh, the response.
The response says, "The comment does not address the adequacy of the draft EIR, but the county has acknowledged the suggestion and intends to work with Caltrans on the technical aspects of SB-743." And it also tells where it's addressed further.
We are already doing that. I work regularly, we have a monthly meeting with Caltrans, COG, Public Works Director, and look at funding opportunities. We understand that the VMT analysis requirement of SB-743 is...will be upon us soon. It's one of those state laws that make a lot of sense in an urban area and is very, very challenging in a rural area. And so, in a sense, it's almost, you know, the concerns that Mr. Teckel had, you know, discussed about the deteriorating roads, the improvements we make will encourage more people to commute down the hill. And, you know, we understand we need good roads. But at the same time, you know, it's very difficult for us when we have such limited development occurring, very little economic development and job creation here going on in counties. You know, how do we encourage people to live and work in the same community, which is essentially what the VMT analysis is trying to get at, is, you know, how does development occur within a community that minimizes the length of trips that people are taking? And when we have a community that is essentially reliant on commuting to job centers elsewhere, it's very difficult for us to...I mean, I think that the bulk of the policies, particularly in the land use element, of trying to encourage a mix of uses within our communities is really what we're trying to do here. I appreciate the comments, and we do work very closely with COG and Caltrans on funding opportunities, on transportation planning issues. Just wanted to mention that.
Like to say something?
If I may interrupt, Mr. Maurer. Just a quick idea, Ralph Copeland, District 4, Copperopolis. Is there anywhere in your general plan addressing higher Calaveras County with incentives to hire within companies within the Calaveras County area? Incentives or at least a...give direction for Caltrans and other jobs to possibly have an incentive to hire within Calaveras County? Of course, women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, they're covered through Caltrans, and they're also covered through federal monies. Again, the minority and the women-owned businesses. I think that would be a way to keep people within the county and also, you know, bring money in. Thank you.
That's definitely an idea that's been discussed a lot and has a lot of legal challenges, and also just a lot of times, in my experience, it's hard to get local companies to bid on federal or state-funded projects, and sometimes even county-funded projects. Okay, commissioners.
Well, I have these two questions. The first is, let's see if I can have a...this would be on page C3. The...could we have that on the screen, Peter?
The LOC list.
Well, on page C3, it says that with this one exception of Highway 26, LOC will be maintained on all state route legs outside of community areas. And the more and more I looked at Policy C2.2, there's a whole list of legs that are stated to be outside of community areas where we're saying LOC is acceptable. I'm just questioning the consistency. If the state's willing to maintain it at LOC, why are we happy with LOC? Or am I misreading things? I'm probably misreading things.
Well, it's...so, the...what they call the transportation concept reports are sort of their long-term planning documents for the various legs of the highway. And their plan is that, without any kind of horizon on it, that they want to maintain LOC on all their legs. They recognize that it's already D and that they'll probably stay that way for that one section, but the rest of it...the reality is, is that that's going to require four-lane highway on the state highway for some of those legs, which they have no plan to fund.
Right. Well, then maybe we need to just change the language on page C3 to say something that...I mean, the impression I get is that the state's...state will be maintaining these at LOC. And that it's like the state is dreaming.
Well, I'm going to add the word "according to" the TCRs at the beginning of that sentence.
The state would like to see them remain at LOC, not that they are willing to do the improvements necessary to create that situation.
And so, I mean, can we just say that Caltrans intends at some point in the future?
No, they don't.
Well, okay, then why do we have this sentence in here? Apparently, you know, it certainly raised a question with me. I mean, if we just have an indication in there that this is not an indication of current level of maintenance.
Yeah, that sentence is sort of...
Why don't we just rephrase that to say that the TCRs for each of the state routes in Calaveras County indicate that Caltrans intends to maintain LOC outside of community areas for all legs except, and then keep the rest?
I don't think that Caltrans does intend to maintain. I mean, that implies that Caltrans is going to come in and fix it for us. I think that's the confusion here, is that's what...
And this is...the conflict that is always going on between local government and Caltrans is that Caltrans say, "Well, that's local traffic, so that's your responsibility." And we're saying, "No, this is regional traffic. It is your responsibility." And we're, you know, while we do work together, there is an inherent conflict between who's paying for what.
Wait, yeah, "maintain..."
How about if Caltrans plans in the future to...
Well, they don't...they're not in the plan. That's the problem.
They've missed these...
I guess maybe it's desire to.
Right, desires to.
In contrast, your reality.
Yeah.
The TCRs list is...
Why don't you just add a comma and a phrase at the end that says, "But don't believe it."
But we've got an unfunded bridge for you.
I think it's that Caltrans' goal, like our goals here, is to create the situation that will allow it to remain at LOC. But the reality of it is, is there's not money to do it, and there's priority projects generally ahead of.
Well, why don't you just reinforce the idea that these are long-term planning reports and say something like, "The TCRs for each of the state roads in Calaveras County is a matter of long-term planning," indicate to more accurately capture what they're supposed to be doing, so we don't have to say, "And don't believe it."
Yeah. Okay, that would satisfy me.
Okay, that works.
Okay, and then my second question is, since in my experience, why Highway 26 has been improved through the years, I just was raising the question of whether this provision about Highway 26 being at LOC was still good. And I guess, from what I hear from the public, it is.
It is still an accurate statement.
Yes, okay. That takes care of that. Peter, are you familiar with, specifically with coordination of the county with Caltrans as far as that portion of Highway 26? The concern seems to be that the county puts encroachments in kind of a willy-nilly fashion and is not really dealing with the fact that we're dealing with a state highway and not coordinating, thinking of future...
We're required, any development that encroaches onto the state highway is required to get an encroachment permit. And Caltrans reviews those and applies their standards to where it is. Now, that may not have been the case in the past. We do have, there are a lot of encroachments, direct driveway encroachments and older road encroachments onto that stretch of road that probably do, I guarantee, do not meet today's standards for encroachments. There's too many of them for the speed and the volume of traffic on that road, but those are results of past decisions that were made, probably prior to the standards being adopted by the state. I don't know the history of how those occurred, but they certainly wouldn't be allowed today.
Is the current problem rising from old decisions?
Past decisions, yes.
And is there anything that we could put in the general plan to, at least in a planning context?
Well, I think there are a number of policies in there already that talk about coordination with, you know, safety of intersections and that. I have to go back and look and figure out, pull up the exact policy, but I'm sure there are policies in there that talk to that as far as new intersection, meeting safety standards. And if, you know, we want, we can, you know, sort of fine-tune some of those if necessary. You know, we work, you know, any project that comes through, we coordinate with Caltrans on. I know there were some decisions that were made even recently as far as Caltrans eliminating an encroachment requirement that was for a project. There is, you know, a sort of a shortcut road that ties in between 12 and 26 that a lot of people use. Subdivision was approved many years ago. There was a requirement that an encroachment be built. The developer requested that that be reconsidered. We circulated to Caltrans. Caltrans said it wasn't necessary. And so, when it came to the planning commission for revision, the commission approved that revision because of what Caltrans told us. It was no longer necessary.
What did Caltrans tell you was just...
That based on...
What wasn't necessary?
A turn lane, and I don't remember the road, but it was a fairly widely-used road as a shortcut between 26 and 12 without going all the way into Valley Springs. You know, a lot of people were disappointed and upset with that decision, but that was based on a recommendation by Caltrans. It based on the traffic calculations. They felt it wasn't necessary. Therefore, they said, "We don't have a problem with eliminating that requirement."
And I know we...
About turnpocket.
We, in planning, we're dealing with planning for the future. Is there such a thing as planning to undo past mistakes?
Well, to the degree that we can, yes. But, you know, we can't force, you know, the exactions of fees, the improvement requirements that we can impose on new development can only address those impacts that are caused by that development. We can't force a new developer to fix the sins of the past. And there are a lot of those out there. And so, that's the challenge that we have, and I think that Joyce brought that up, is that, you know, we need to look at how do we fund these unfunded improvements that are necessary. And that's, you know, that's what our Public Works Department had, is trying to do, is looking at limited funding that we have, what kind of grants are available out there, you know, is there federal money, is there other state money? How can we use that most effectively to fix the problems that we have, and there are road problems?
And when Caltrans does improvements to the state highway to increase the flow of traffic through them, they often severely limit any access onto that section of highway, which...well, but you can't have multiple driveways, and if you have a bunch of small parcels along a state highway, it just becomes a huge issue.
But there's also a requirement that if there is a parcel, they must allow an encroachment. You can't restrict someone to access to their property.
Right, but that also then means that they can't design that section of state highway to the standard they'd like to, that would allow speeds and throughput that they'd really like to see. It's always an issue.
The traffic engineers would love to have unobstructed flow of traffic.
Yes.
That's their mission in life.
Yes.
But, you know, we have different challenges, and we'll use Murphy's as an example. Caltrans unilaterally decided they were going to put in a left turn lane through a portion of Highway 4 in Murphy's. And we were able to get a grant to study that in more detail before they just started construction, to say, "Maybe, you know, do you want to hold off until we can see what is necessary for pedestrian access and bicycle circulation and all these other things?" And Michelle, you were part of the local committee that we had a lot of citizen input to try to work with Caltrans to make sure that the improvements that they were going to do to increase traffic flow through town didn't adversely affect the longer-term plans for the community. We love that when that happens, but it doesn't always happen. Caltrans does not have to report to us on what they intend to do.
No, we read it in the little chart that arrives. Huh. Yeah.
So, I think, you know, if we want to take a look at some of the policies and want to beef up some of the language regarding, you know, coordination with Caltrans, I think it's in there already. To the degree that we have the authority to, you know, direct the state agency to do anything, you know, we will do whatever we can, and we are doing whatever we can, to coordinate and cooperate with Caltrans. It's a two-way street, though.
I'll take a look over lunch, get all these policies with that in mind.
Is there any type of pathway for a county to request projects being done through Caltrans? Because the way I look at this, this is one of the most, personally, I think this is one of the most important... one of the most important sections of this because without logistics moving in and out of a county, it restricts the county's growth automatically. So if you're, for, Caltrans is going to retain Level Service D for 26 and C for Highway 12, Highway 12 is a much better road than 26, but there's a direct correlation of how much we can grow with what we can bring into the county and export out of the county. Somebody that's wanting to bring any type of industry up to this county and what we want to do with economic growth, they're not going to do it because the logistics is costly and the flow is not there. So, I mean, is there any way we can request updating state highways or?
Yeah, there's a number of different processes that we work with the council of governments on. When the funding priorities of the state are released, you know, it's through the council of governments that the local government funding priorities are established. And so each year, through the regional transportation plan, we identify what we need in the future. And then that's used as a tool to request funding for Caltrans, both for local roads but also for state highways. And then the funding formula that distributes billions of dollars in, you know, transportation funds goes out to the various communities through the COG, and then that's distributed, you know, either to the local government or it's done by the state itself. So we do work, you know, on a regular basis. And there's an annual plan of, you know, how Caltrans is going to spend its money. And sometimes, you know, it's also federal dollars. So there's umpteen different grant programs and funding programs that the transportation planners at COG, working with our Public Works Department, identify what are our priorities and then request that funding and request the state to say, "Well, make this a priority, please." Ultimately, it is the state's decision of where they're going to spend their money. But, you know, a well-written grant application typically gets funded. We have a number of, there's probably at least 15 to 20 different funding programs that we're working on right now with Caltrans and the COG to make certain road improvements, everywhere from, you know, up in the West Point area down to the lower county lines.
And when we prioritize major improvements to a state highway or a bypass, it requires a big contribution by us in funds and we don't generally, yes. So, and we get some money from the state also to use, but typically, we need a lot of that money just to get through the day-to-day stuff. So in the past, we had a tri-county MOU and we put all of our money together to get a couple of large for one in Amador, one here, and then Alpine got some passing lanes. Alpine contributed a portion of their funding to our projects. But those projects take decades to see through, to fruition, decades. It's a real conundrum. But I believe that the bypass at Valley Springs has been looked at multiple times and kind of floats around there in the priority. And then there's always issues on getting everyone to agree to what is the proper solution, right?
Yeah, and projects and.
Yeah.
Which we never finish.
It's fun. Go talk to Amber at the COG.
But matching funds are important.
Yes. Yep. We were going to try to find the section, take a look at what the, you were going to identify the section that talks about Caltrans coordination.
Oh, I can look at that over lunch then.
So Policy C-1.4, coordinate with the Calaveras Council of Governments and Caltrans on the development and maintenance of the regional transportation system.
What was the number, Peter?
C-1.4. And then the implementation measure is similar, C-1-D. Work with COG and Caltrans to secure funding for implementation of comprehensive circulation and access plans of state highways, corridors to ensure that plan development is compatible with current facilities and transportation concept designations.
And then we do have a RIM and benefit basin fee update measure, right?
Yes.
So should we look at page C-19? Did we?
This is another public input thing. Doing transit planning. Currently, it just says, "Work with the Calaveras County Council of Governments and the City of Angels Camp to update the annual unmet transit needs report and to periodically review and update the short-range transit plan." I suggested we put in reference to transit users and potential transit users between Calaveras County Council of Governments and the City of Angels.
Unmet transit needs report actually requires public outreach to different groups. It's part of that. I mean, it's fine to add it in there, but there is a process for that that requires public clearance.
Okay, well, why don't we just say "the public" instead of what I'm suggesting? Just to underscore that that is necessary. But thank you. I get educated.
There's outreach to like senior service coordination groups, all sorts of things.
Yeah, well, if we say "the public," then that's broad enough to.
To just add "and the public" after it.
Yeah, or just put "the public" between governments and City of Angels Camp. You put it wherever you think is better.
Does anybody have anything, last chance to add anything on the circulation?
I would like to, you know, keep the question open until after lunch.
Sure. Go ahead and add to it. Just a real quick thing that I did overlook. The importance of matching funds, that's why the talk of additional taxing and so on. When you have adequate matching funds, you get higher up the list to get that big funding and those projects come faster. That's why it's so important. And I know we're small and I know we don't have a lot of money, but our homes are our biggest investment that we have.
While you're there, Joyce. Joyce?
I thought you were agreeing with me, too. Okay, go ahead.
I agree with you, as ever.
That's okay if you don't. I can handle it.
Peter's pointed out that Policy C-1.4 says, "coordinate with the Calaveras Council of Governments and Caltrans on the development and maintenance of the regional transportation system." Now, that isn't, is that not specific enough for you, for us?
It's a beginning. I was talking to Colleen when we were sitting back there, and what I would add is, "Take them to lunch and have a beer with Caltrans." That's the kind of, that's the kind of networking and relationship building that has been absent here that will serve us all very well if we can reach that point. And that's a joke, but you know what I mean.
I know, but the COG has a very good relationship with Caltrans.
Yeah, I know they do. I know they do.
Actually, and, you know, we saw we had the Murphy's project, the Complete Streets project. The Caltrans attended almost every one of those meetings.
Yep.
I don't think it's a relationship issue as much as it's a money issue.
That's a, that is, you're right, that is a huge issue. But remember, this, we had to sue the county to get them to collect RIM fees. And it took, it took us six years, but, so we've had to push. But if that money had been collected all along as the development had occurred, we'd be in a whole different place. But we can fix it. We just have to have the will.
So perhaps keeping on the county to actually update the RIM fee.
Yes.
You know, making that a priority.
Yes, and if there is a need for additional benefit basins, as we grow and change, that should happen right now, not when they're pushed into it.
Additional benefit basins are mentioned in here.
They are.
Yeah, I remember that, too.
C-2D is the program that talks about updating the RIM fee and the benefit basin fees to keep up with inflation and.
You'll recall that there's also always pushback to any increase in fees because then there's the whole, are we deterring development by increasing our RIM fees?
Tell that to Napa, tell that to El Dorado County, tell that to, you know, they charge a lot more than we do and they're, oh, well.
Peter, I continue my education at the expense of time here. Just what can RIM fees pay for? Are they just development-specific? I mean, as far as if a developer has paid into the RIM fee?
So in order to set up a fee, you need to know what it is you're funding. And so we would look at our circulation plan and say, "Okay, here are the road improvements that we need to make to support the new development that's coming."
That.
Then a calculation is made, you know, how is that distributed? You know, per square foot of commercial development, per residential unit. And then as money is collected, then the $9 million that's sitting there can be used for an improvement to that list of improvements that were necessary to support the development. It can't be used to improve a problem road that already exists unless that is a part of the impact of new development.
Of that new development. Am I right, or is it?
The RIM fees are a broad base, so county-wide. So we expect to have 2,000 new residents coming and those roads are going to affect, and we've done a modeling of that, and those are the maps that you see in the circulation element that says, "Here is where we're going to need to widen roads or make improvements to roads to accommodate this new development."
So even if the RIM fee was collected for Copper Office Development, it could be spent in Arnold?
No, the RIM fees are not collected by community. Benefit basin fees aren't collected.
Right, but the RIM fee, which is county-wide.
Right.
Each year, the board, you know, the Public Works Department says, "Here's how we propose to spend this money this year." And they have a push and shove, we want my district, but it can't be spent anywhere. The benefit basin fees are more localized. And so you have specific boundaries of, you know, here are the impacts on this one road and we're just going to be used to fix this one or, you know, a list of several roads within that narrow basin.
So, but the RIM fee itself can be spent anywhere in the county, but it has to involve new development money?
It has to be part of the identified improvement program necessary to serve the new development.
A new development.
All new development.
Yeah, all new development.
Right, so every single piece of new construction pays the RIM fee here in Calaveras County. So a single-family home in Rancho is going to pay that RIM fee.
Right.
But the project that has been identified as a priority project could be anywhere in the county.
Exactly.
But if we just have a deteriorating road somewhere and it's been deteriorating for 20 years and there isn't any new development nearby, RIM fee can't be used.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I have some issues here. On the circulation, I have no issues with the proposed revisions to the policies, but I do have some questions with some of the implementation measures. Starting with IMC-2B, Transportation Impact Study Guidelines. And that was changed to require that the guidelines include all modes of travel, et cetera, instead of consider all modes of travel. And it's really just a question which is, does this really work for all guidelines in all locations? In other words, in this county, you can't have a bike lane on all roads. They're too narrow. And you can't have public transportation everywhere. So the question is, is this change actually workable or is it too restrictive? And I don't have an answer to it.
Well, I wonder if maybe it's just, I mean, the guidelines include all modes of trans, I mean, would that be satisfied by a consideration of bicycle movement and the conclusion that there isn't room for it here?
Then you should use the word "consider," which is what it was the first time.
I thought that we are required to consider all modes these days.
Then you would use the word "consider."
Right, I agree. I think you have to at least look at that possibility always.
Well, I mean, we were happy with it the way it was because that's the way the commission wrote it in the Board Senate, off of the EIR, but I think it's really a question for Mr. Mauer.
I'm afraid, Peter, we have to pull you into this.
So right now, we don't have specific standards to, when an applicant comes in and we say we need to look at your transportation impacts. Typically, it's a road impact study. It's vehicular traffic. And the change here was intended to reflect changes in state law to SEQA and other, you know, transportation policy legislation that says we need to look at other modes of transit or transportation. And I would agree with Commissioner Ladish that the idea here is that the guidelines include how do we look at pedestrian and bicycle and other transit circulation and not just automobiles. It doesn't mean that every road has to have a bike lane. It just means that the guidelines have to include provisions for, you know, how do we look at, how do we study and analyze the impacts? And so I, it's probably not a critical change, but I think it is important enough to be consistent with state law that I would use the word "include" rather than "consider."
It's really that our guidelines are going to require us to study all modes, not necessarily require them to all be implemented.
Right, right.
So you can include the consideration by, for example, a bike lane between Sheep Ranch and Murphy's and then decide, "This is not a good idea."
Well, again, these are, these are impact study guidelines. So this is what we would tell someone, "This is what you need to look at as, you know, your proposed subdivision is going to create, you know, 2,000 new vehicle trips per day." And, you know, and that's typically what we've looked at in the past, just the vehicle trips per day. What the state law is saying is that now we need to look at not just vehicle trips, but pedestrian circulation and bicycle circulation and other modes of transportation. And so what we want to do is, what does an applicant have to contract with their transportation consultant? Thank you. I'm trying to mental blank there. You know, transportation consultant, what do they need to look at to satisfy CEQA requirements for adequate transportation analysis? And so, you know, it just says, you know, we'll have to come up with some type of standard that says, "Here's what you have to look at." The conclusion may be that we don't need a bike lane between Sheep Ranch and Arnold. But the developer needs to know what it is that they have to pay for as part of their analysis.
If I understand it correctly, I mean, really, we're saying include basically means "consider," but under the current climate of state regulation, it's more prudent to say "include" in your guidelines than to consider.
So there'll just be provisions in the guidelines, "Here's what you need to look at."
Yeah.
Does this project create an impact where people should be able to walk to, you know, shops or schools or parks or whatever? know, shops or schools or parks or whatever, and how do you analyze that? What's the likelihood of pedestrian?
What if you say include consideration of?
Well, that's what I was just going to say. What if we say guidelines that must include the consideration of all modes of?
Or include and consider.
Well, I think we need to separate, the must is for the guidelines and the all is for consideration.
I think that's what essentially Peter's explained this does, and so I would like your language.
Okay. So the language that you just?
Include for consideration, all modes of travel.
Include consideration of all modes of travel, okay.
Well, you could just say include for consideration, all modes of travel. You don't need the of. Okay, my next one is IMC-2D, and it's really kind of a related question, and this has to do with the road impact mitigation fee updates. There's a, an addition that says include in the impact fee calculations, non-vehicular improvements such as pedestrian and bicycle facilities, park and ride lots, and public transportation infrastructure. And the question is similar. Does that, is that workable, the way rim fee updates are done?
So, right now, the fee is only looking at the road improvements, the travel service improvements. And what this is suggesting is that we include, when we look at what improvements do we need that the developers should fund, should we also include sidewalks in any of those? Should we include bike lanes? Should we include park and ride lots or transit stops as a part of the public improvements that are going to be funded through this rim fee program? So if we say, okay, on this stretch of road, because it's right next to a school, we want to make sure a sidewalk gets put in. That cost is included in the calculation for how much a developer pays per house or per square foot of commercial development.
Makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me, too.
Okay, and my last one is IMC-3A, park and ride facilities. It used to start off saying, as funding allows, designate and implement appropriate park and ride facilities and promote ride-sharing programs. The proposal is to dilute, delete as funding allows, which raises the question, how are we going to do this without funding?
I have a whole nother question about this item, which is the specificity of naming park and ride facilities as a solution when they have not been particularly successful in our county. They're not used to their full capacity, they're used for other purposes for the most part, which, it's great that they've built some parking lots, but I just wonder, are there other ride-sharing programs, like the COG at one time had an online ride-sharing thing where you could find other people that commuted to the same location as you, that kind of thing? Should we make this more generic to look for all kinds of solutions that would help reduce the number of vehicle miles? Especially in this day and age of running everything off your phone.
If you have a connection.
Yeah, well, it's just, I don't object to the park and ride, I just think to make a mandate that park and ride is the solution maybe isn't the right thing.
Well, first getting back, I think we've got two different issues here, and I think Kelly raises a good question of if you take out as funding allows. I mean, maybe the implication is, is that you're going to find funding, but if so, you're going to have to put that in there, I think.
Well, yes, and given the legislative history, where it was once in and now we took it out.
Yep, well, do you remember the history of this one?
I don't know. Do you?
I mean, I don't think that's a big deal.
I think it's sort of implied that, you know, any of these improvements are going to require funding.
Yeah.
And it was, you know, one of the few measures where we actually stated as where funding allows. I don't suppose it really is a problem keeping it in.
I think it comes back, most likely got changed because the public has been pretty consistent that those kinds of prefacing statements make it sound like, well, we're just never going to get funding for that, so. And I think the idea is that if this is important, we're going to find the funding to at least designate potential facility locations.
Well, that ties in with C two D where he says we're going to include these in our planning for funding.
Right.
And so, you know, in a way, they're related in that, okay, if we're looking at where park and ride facilities, and maybe we determined that because of the lack of use there, we don't need anymore, and so, you know, to get back to your question. This is implementation of Policy 3.2 that talks about alternative transportation in general, encourage expansion of public transit services. I'm not even sure that actually, it's about reducing automobile dependency, although it's.
Reducing the number.
It minimizes the use of an auto. I'm not sure that I see the best connection to a policy, but maybe it's more appropriate in C 3.4, encourage you to use the public transit as well as ride-sharing and van pools. I mean, ride-sharing and van pool would definitely use a park and ride lot. So, you know, designate and implement appropriate park and ride facilities. I mean, it's a part of the overall transportation planning that we need to do to attempt to minimize vehicle miles traveled ultimately, but also address issues such as air pollution, greenhouse gases, those kinds of things. So, to the degree that we can help people have alternatives to getting in their car and driving by themselves back and forth to work, that's what these policies and measures are trying to do. It doesn't mean that everyone's going to be ride-sharing, but if we have a place where people can do that, and we, you know, if we suddenly see, you know, a lot of development occurring in a community where, hey, everyone's commuting down to Lowdy for work, why don't we see if there's a spot for a park and ride lot that a handful of them might share a ride? I don't think it creates any harm to do that.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with it as long as we just include other things in there, not say we're, and it says ride-sharing programs, but this seems like this is a program. We're not, we don't have to find funding, we're not building them here. We're just identifying likely locations and different kinds of programs that could be used to reduce our reliance on individual cars to get places. And so I think just saying designate, well, it says and implement. I mean, we definitely should be doing the planning for any of these and evaluating what makes sense, not dependent on getting some future funding. Then we might have to go look for funding to actually implement it.
I think, just getting back to Commissioner Booster's point, I think if, as originally, if you take disregard the as funding allows, I don't think I would have any problem with the provision as, starting with designate, it's just that you bring up, you know, as long as that's there crossed out, it raises the logical question that you had. But once I disregard that language completely and it's gone, I don't have a problem, I mean, it's, it's the same as what we get throughout this general plan.
Well, I suppose we can say that it's implied.
Yeah.
That this will be done as funding and if funding becomes available.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's implied in everything. It's just that you just drew the issue right out in the open.
But I'm not sure we've dealt with Ms. Plotnick's.
No, I know, I know, I just was trying to take care of one.
Yeah, I think all we need to do is mention that we're going to evaluate a range of potential programs, including and implement them as funding allows.
It's interesting that this is under public transit when we're talking about park and ride, but.
Yeah, which is a sort of quasi-public.
Yeah, okay. Communal.
Yes.
Maybe the title, public transit, is, you know, more appropriate with something of, you know, alternative transportation programs or something.
Yeah.
We could change that.
Would it help to say designate and implement appropriate ride-sharing programs, including but not limited to park and ride facilities?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that puts the emphasis on the ride-sharing programs. I think that's a great idea.
Perfect.
And that's all I had on the circulation.
So it would re-designate and implement appropriate.
Ride-sharing programs.
Ride-sharing programs, including but not limited to park and ride facilities.
Park and, yes.
Do we want to keep the and promote in there?
Well, I think it's implied with implement.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was a conscious decision. And do we want to change that title of the program and policy section to alternative transportation rather than public transit, if I think it's maybe too narrow?
But then it gets broad, I mean, where are the bicycles?
Right, I think it's okay.
Okay.
Maybe park and ride facilities wants to say ride-sharing programs, so.
Oh, yes, the title.
I think we're at a good breaking point for lunch, and we will reconvene in an hour, 1:00, 1:05.
Excuse me, let me just stand up.
It's okay. To start talking about resource production.
Well, I'd like to leave it open.
Right, to come back, yeah, for sure. We're not closing, we're in the wagon. What's your middle name?
Graves.
Timothy Graves, turn your.
Yeah, that's right.
Welcome back, everybody. I hope you had a chance to have some lunch or maybe a little coffee, whatever it takes to be enthused about being here. So I think that Commissioner Lattish wanted to report back, and he's writing really quickly.
Well, right now, I tried to print in the way somebody could read it. What I propose is that in the introduction to the circulation element, when you get down to the fourth paragraph, it starts, Cala Rares County contains its first provision. Rest of that sentence, it's spread widely across numerous rural residential parcels or focused in small rural communities. I would add, from the San Joaquin Valley to the High Sierra Nevada, period. I printed this out, Peter, so you don't have to write it down. The second sentence would stay exactly the same, that's, these communities' principal connection is via rural road system of state highways and county roads, almost exclusively two-lane. Then I would add a sentence, without taking anything out later on, in this varied terrain, many miles of the system are in need of repair, but limitations of the county's tax base has resulted in not enough funding for too many identified and needed road projects. And that's it.
And the rest of it remains.
The rest of it remains as it is. This is to stress the need that we do have. Well, thank you, I think everybody agrees with that.
My only comment is perhaps that too, T zero zero, in too many needed, doesn't need to be there, that many is quantitative, too is qualitative. And if, you know, I.
Actually, actually, what I meant to say was too little funding for too many, so I had another two in there, just to get a little alliteration style. So, you don't want?
I'm okay with both of them, actually, because they are compared to one another, but with just one of them.
Right, I agree. Once again, my hand didn't write.
But my only concern with that is that as long as we're talking about in the past, that that's been the case, the idea here is that we're going to update our funding program so that we do meet the demands of, you know, prospective development and the transportation needs of that, recognizing that we can't rely on that funding to fix past problems. And so as long as it's clear that we aren't saying, we're going to continue with not enough funding, that creates a problem.
Right, okay. So too little present funding?
Or historically too little funding.
Resulted in historically too little.
Yeah. That gives you a little stronger comfort level.
Basically, we're in the hole now, and we can do ten out of it. Any other comments?
I think it's okay.
Can you pass out to Nat and I to get it from her?
Yeah.
Thank you.
See if you can read it.
Now I know where to find you.
Great. So on to resource production. Orient us.
So, the resource production element, which focuses primarily on the protection of ag, forestry, and mineral resources. There haven't been many changes, but the few changes here, I think, are going to be somewhat controversial and subject to a lot of discussion. So there was no edits, that I recall, in the discussion portion of it, when we get into the goals and policies, there was one sort of a clarification edit on two points, Policy 2.7, adding utility scale to sort of clarify what that was, that it's not considered too confusing. It's when we get into the implementation program and the recommended mitigation measures that we have some fairly significant changes. The first one is to measure RP 1A, which adds a requirement for a buffer setback for that, additional bullet. And then the other one that I'm sure there will be quite a bit of discussion on is RP 1E, which essentially puts back in the appendix. which essentially puts back in the Appendix B review requirements that the commission had previously removed from the recommended draft in 2015, I believe. Let's see if there's any other edits, and really those are the only ones. So questions from the commission, or open it up to the public?
Ready to go ahead?
And then we also have some suggested edits by Mr. Ladish, which you will bring up when it's your turn.
So are we ready to hear from the public?
Before we do that, just sort of a little housekeeping. We had discussed about how far we're going to go today, and I discussed with the chair the fact that I think there's probably some additional work that we need to do on the conservation open space element, and I think we're moving along more quickly than I anticipated. And I think maybe the commissioners also might want to have a little more time before we dive right into that. That's also going to be fairly controversial, with a lot of mitigation measures in there that we'll be wanting to discuss. So I'm suggesting that we end the meeting today after we conclude the discussion of resource production, if we get there by the end of the day. And we intend to pick up conservation open space on next Friday. We will, as the focus of that meeting, now, we may discuss it to some degree on the evening meeting-
On next Wednesday?
Is it Wednesday?
Wednesday evening.
Wednesday evening and Thursday, okay, it's the following week, Thursday and Friday.
It's okay.
So next Thursday, week from today, would be the intent to pick up a thorough discussion of the conservation open space element, although we could also discuss it to some degree on next Wednesday evening. So just to let everyone know that we intend, if the commission agrees to conclude today's hearing on this element.
Just to make sure that we're not treading on the Brown Act, I think maybe we might just at least open discussion and then close it on the conservation, because I've distributed my-
We're never closing this hearing.
It's not a separate item, it's all one agenda item, so we can really sort of jump around anywhere we want to. It's just a means of trying to focus the discussion on manageable bites.
Yeah.
So I don't believe there's any Brown Act violation, having information out there regarding that element.
Okay.
And the idea is that on Wednesday, we will allow a broader range of topics, because people may not be able to come to the daytime, so we won't maybe start it very officially, even though we'll take comments from the public on Wednesday. But on Thursday, that will be the serious start of that.
We can also, we'll need discussion of the special plan.
On Wednesday, we'll be discussing of everything on Wednesday. Thank you, Peter. I completely just got right back into the open-
Wait a second. Okay, great, thank you.
Now, we're ready for comments from the public.
Good afternoon. My name's Bob Guaramendi, and I'm here representing sort of a has-been group, but it was called the Ag Coalition. We started before the general plan process started. We actually rezoned, we were working on the rezoning under the ag element at the time, not the ag element, but the general plan at the time. The Ag Coalition hadn't met since 2015, when the last planning commission, Kelly, you were there, went through the element, the plan. And I just wanted to make clear, first of all, that we're very glad to see Appendix B being at least put in at an interim, and we would like to see it perhaps become a fixture of the general plan. And I want to make clear on that, it says, "Prepared by the Ag Coalition, November 2011, and modified May 6, 2019." The Ag Coalition was not party to that modification. So there are a couple of things that were modified that we did discuss, we met last week, those members that were representing their different organizations, the Farm Bureau, cattlemen, Calaveras Growing, Wine Grape Alliance, and the forestry industry. The one that stuck out for us was on page 10, the implementation, RP-1E, that Mr. Maurer mentioned. It changed the ratio for mitigation from two to one to one to one. And we are not sure exactly why that was changed, but we are very concerned that, at a minimum, the ag lands, as described in that section, be mitigated at a two-to-one ratio. There's very, very little land in the county that would meet that definition, under that ag definition. And we feel it's critical to preserve as much of that ag land as possible. And we feel a two-to-one ratio at a minimum would help do that. The other issue, it's something that, it's an edit that probably should be done, on page 11, RP-2D, that has been done. Calaveras County does now have a resource conservation. Okay, and then, I hate to wordsmith, but there's a, on page seven, RP-5.1. At the bottom line, it says eliminate. I don't have a replacement word for eliminate, but it seems like that could be problematic moving ahead. If you look above, just above, it says prevent or minimize. I think perhaps there could be another word, or several words, that could eliminate public hazards, anything, walking out this door, there could be a public hazard. I mean, I see a step out there. So it's just a concern, I want to express that.
Minimize, do the job?
Whatever the commission feels would be appropriate, but I just want to make sure our concerns were listened to. The other one is in Appendix A, page two, number three. And again, this is, it says already designated, and I don't know if designated would be the proper word there. Mr. Maurer, you might be able to help, maybe already zoned?
I was still making notes on the last one. What page are you on?
This is on Appendix A, page two. Number three.
So in this context, designated would be the land use designation. So what it is, is if the project is proposed on resource production land, one of the findings that supervisors would need to make to approve that project would be that, and we've looked at all the other suitably designated, so if they're proposing a commercial development, for example, is there a commercial, a commercial land use designated land that would be available for the project proposed on the resource production land, that they're proposing to change to commercial? So that's what designated means.
Could that just be clarified, then, just as a land use designation?
Or is it designated under the general plan, maybe?
That's all I have.
Let me ask you a question.
I'd be happy to answer any question.
In Appendix B, there's a long definition of resource production land on page two and page three, but would this Appendix B apply to any land that is designated resource production under the general plan?
It is meant to, yes.
I'm not asking you to amend Appendix B, but we might make that clear in the body. Thank you.
Excuse me. Too much sandwich. Collin Platt. Let me see. I want to express our support for the new RP-1A measure for buffers. I thought that was very good. And also the RP-1E mitigations added with some questions and reservations about that. And I, this is not my area of expertise, so this is more in the form of a question for discussion. The definition of agricultural lands under that, I just did a little bit of reading on that, and it talks about if the Department of Farmland Conservation, that has various criteria that have not been enacted yet, so we're going to do in the interim, we're going to use Appendix B. But there was references to the definitions of ag lands as consistent with Public Resource Code Section 210601B in areas of the county where mapping is not available, and it has to meet the requirement of prime agricultural land as defined in this section of Government Code 51201. So I looked that up, and I think there was a one, two, and a three part, and the one had to do with the rating of the lands, which I don't think applies yet, and the rating of the soils, 80 to 100. And then number three, it actually got into a definition of agricultural land as land that supports livestock with an annual carrying capacity equivalent to greater or equal to one animal unit per acre, as per USDA or something. Anyway, it was the capacity of the land to carry animals was the definition of agricultural land under this code, whatever it was. And so that sounded good to me, you know, land that can carry cattle, so that's rangeland, right? So I mentioned that to a friend, and I said, "No, no, not Calaveras County rangelands. They can't support one cow per acre that's 100 acres per cow." I mean, whatever it is, it's not that definition. And so my friend was telling me that basically this disqualifies all agricultural rangelands in Calaveras County as being considered agricultural land suitable for mitigation, which that doesn't sound good. So I don't know the answer. I'm just, it sounds to me like this is a good idea, but maybe it won't help our rangelands.
Where was the Public Resources Code cited?
Okay, this was in the EIR Master Response Number Five, Agricultural Asements and Buffers. And it's, you know, in all those red, strike code, new code, and at the bottom of a whole bunch of stuff, at the very end of the red, in the interim, the county will utilize the paragraph above that. As defined in paragraph 1, 2, 3, or 4 of subdivision C of Section 51201 of the Government Code. And that's, you know, how they're going to define agricultural land suitable for mitigation.
Did that make it into anything that we now have in the general plan, Land Act?
I don't know. It's just, you know, if this is all based on the definition of ag lands as the state defines ag lands, and our rangelands don't qualify, does that do us any good?
I thought I read somewhere, but now I've read so many things that like you, I might have lost track, that most of Calaveras would not qualify under those definitions, but that it was the intent that if property was currently being used in that manner, to consider it agricultural or rangeland. I don't, I'm not going to swear to that, or where I thought I read it.
Right.
My thought is, is that if that is in a response, but not making it into a text.
Oh, wait a minute, it's right there, I just saw it. It's in the RP-1E. Purchase of Bank- The purpose of mitigation, quote, agricultural land, unquote, shall be defined as follows. And then it refers to the mapping program and public resource, the second bullet point, Public Resource Code, Section 210, and then that's the rest of the paragraph right there.
So that, and that's the Public Resources provision that you were reading?
Yeah, that's where I looked it up online, and I've read all the parts, and it described all those different things. It didn't seem like it-
We probably ought to be able to come up with a better definition.
Yeah, agricultural land, so that it will help us with our rangelands. That was my question, and Bob might know the answer to that, too. I don't know.
This is a good example of the state being too involved in our lives. There's nothing wrong with putting cows on range and having them use 100 acres per cow to survive. What is wrong with that? One of the things that those cows do is they keep down the grass so that if there is a fire, the fire does not get as bad as it would have been. And so I'm really perturbed that, you know, cows are on the chopping block. They are a big part of our life, and I think they should stay a big part of our life. And I know it's not politically correct, but that's how I feel.
Any additional comments?
Could I ask Peter a question?
Yes, come up, and maybe we might want to ask you some questions.
In relation to the last topic, you know, you're into something so much, you maybe overlook things. So I looked at those as two different things. You know, you have the agricultural lands that meet that definition, and then you have all the other resource production lands. And basically, it says, you know, "To establish mitigation alternatives for conservation of resource production lands to non-resource production uses." Then it goes on to talk about the ag lands. If there is that kind of question that exists, I would ask that it be clarified.
And you intend to have agricultural land encompassed more than just grazing land, correct?
Well, correct. Again, it looks like that's a two-part paragraph there. And I think, you know, the rangeland, which there's probably at least a quarter to a third of the county, is rangeland that wouldn't meet this definition of agriculture. You know, the vineyards, orchards, irrigated pasture, perhaps, but that would be about it.
Any further comments? Kelly, do you recall what the intention was there?
Yes, I do.
I had a discussion about this whole definition thing.
Well, I do recall what the intention was. The original RP-1E was the first sentence. And the idea was, even though there would have to be a general plan amendment to convert resource production designated land to non-ag uses, excuse me, it might be helpful to come up with a list, non-exclusive li- up with a list, a non-exclusive list of mitigation alternatives that people could look at and deal with when they came to the county, that the county would be willing to consider. That was the idea. There was no, there was no mandatory set list of mitigation alternatives. Does that comport with your recollection, Peter?
That's my recollection, yes.
And Appendix B did come up, and we did not include it because we didn't think it was, A, necessary, B, it shouldn't be exclusive. And people could come up with, if they wanted to, what was in Appendix D, if they wanted to. That was the idea. Then what happened was, when, when the DEIR came out, it identified some impacts to lands that were not protected by the resource production or working lands designation. So it wouldn't require a general plan amendment to convert those lands if they existed. And the lands they were concerned about were these farmlands, these prime farmlands and farmlands of unique importance, farmlands of statewide importance, which is, I think, a pretty narrow category of, of lands. And so what they said in the, in the draft EIR was, we don't have mapping data to, to know whether there are any of those lands in the county, and so where they are. And so therefore, we can't at this time come up with a mitigation alternative. That was the draft EIR. That's how it went. When the final EIR came out, all of this RP-1E appeared for the first time. And I don't want to get into an argument about it now, but that's the background of how we got to where we are. 1E was, was, came out in response to a perceived impact on these farmlands that might not be, if they existed, might not be already protected under the RP or working lands designation. That was the impetus.
And just to follow up on that a little bit more, the sequel requirement for our review specifically asks us to identify if a project would have a significant impact, would, would impact those, you know, the terminology that's used. Would it convert prime farmland, unique farmland, or farmland of statewide importance as shown on the master paragraph pursuant to farmland mapping monitoring program to non-agricultural use? That's the threshold that SEQUIS says we need to look at. And so that's why that terminology is used in this measure, because there could be land. Now, my experience in Foothill County says there's very little of that land in this region. There could be some. And in fact, we now do have, the Natural Resource Conservation District did just complete a soil mapping project for the counties. And so, you know, we, we have some data available. The mapping hasn't been done. I have a meeting scheduled with the state next month to sort of start that process. So we have that, that information. But I think that Commissioner Booster is, is correct in that it is very narrowly focused, and the idea was, well, there couldn't be some other land that's already designated something else that might meet that criteria. The, the, so other counties have adopted similar measures, and there's also a category that can be used called farmland of local importance. And that is typically land that's under Williamson Act contract. There could be some local and unique features that we say, we want to protect this for whatever reason. And although other county was the Apple Hill region, because it was, you know, agricultural use, a strong economic driver, wanted to protect it. But that's something that we would, if we were to move forward to something like this and come up with a program that said, okay, here are the important farmlands that we need to protect, and we need to apply some measure to, we would identify what those are in addition to, or we could identify in addition to, these state requirements to look at. Yeah, so that's something we are.
So basically, the, the first sentence really is not broad enough to cover everything that the, that you might encounter in an EIR as far as, assuming that resource production land means resource production land as designated in the general plan, and you're saying that some of these prime farmlands may not be resource production land.
Well, the, the likelihood that there is any prime farmland in the county is very small.
Don't let the Chamber of Commerce hear you say that.
But, but we have productive farmland.
Yeah.
But it doesn't meet the criteria that the state establishes as far as, you know, we must protect this.
Right.
Or, you know, we need to identify that we're going to eliminate that and come up with findings to do so in, in a project. In this case, because we didn't have the data available, we don't know what those are. But I think that it's, it's pretty clear, given the topography and soil types in the county, that, you know, if there is any, it's very limited.
Well, I, I could add to that a little piece of information that comes out of what we have here. With respect to the, to the Section 51201, which defines prime agricultural land that Ms. Platt was speaking about, we do have a map at Figure 2.2-1, page 4.2.4 of the draft EIR. And that is a map of the county that's covered by Williamson Act contracts. And that map shows the prime agricultural land for those areas that are covered by Williamson Act contracts, which is a lot of country. And if you look at that map, you will see there is very little prime agricultural land, which I think is a broader category than these farmlands that, that the, that the impact was concerned with.
What page in the draft was that?
It's Figure 4.2-1. I think it's page 4.2.4.
And under that Williamson Act, prime agricultural land, is that designation within the Louisiana?
No, no, the Williamson Act covers much more than prime agricultural land.
Oh, no, I just wondered if it broke it down.
Well, I don't know how this map was done, but what I can tell you, the Williamson Act is shown in brown, and as I say, it covers a lot of country. And of the Williamson Act-covered land, the green is the prime agricultural land as defined in this Public Resources Code. And as I said, there's very little of it. And so I have to assume that these farmlands of statewide importance and so forth either don't exist in this county, or they are not going to be very many. So to the extent that the concern is with the impact, we're not talking about much.
So it gets, back to the question of, this is much broader, this is any, any change from resource production land require at least a one-to-one replacement, or as suggested, a two-to-one. So this is quite, quite a broad category.
Well, it goes way, way beyond mitigating the impact, if there is any impact, which we don't know if there is any, because we don't know if we have any of these farmlands.
No, I, I think it's assuming that we recognize the impact that we don't want to get rid of. Generally speaking, we don't want to get rid of resource production land.
Well, that's a different impact.
Well, no, but I mean, I think that's the impact that now is being dealt with.
And that takes you back to the same discussion we had earlier about, okay, if it's designated resource production, is it going to take a general plan amendment to change it and figure it out then? I think before we get too far on this, we ought to follow up on, sort of in order, Mr. Ladish's suggested changes to the resource production elements.
Sure, do that first and then come back to these?
Yeah.
And I would, I just think we ought to be consistent. I've got all three different entries about the.
I will go through and do a global search for background report and refer to the correct document.
Thank you. And I, I was suggesting we have a site here, too, because everyone still, I mean, somebody coming to this element wouldn't know that we cited three elements before. Good. Okay, but then my next one is RP-1A. Okay, now this is, can, could you put RP page nine up there?
I was looking at RP 2, the first thing.
That's on page RP 2, that's, that's the, he's got to take care of all my nitpicking.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, those first three points.
Okay, so now we're on page RP 9, and this has to do with providing buffers. And I didn't, I don't think I really added any additional requirements here. I try, I'm trying for clarification. It currently provides, require a 300-foot to 500-foot buffer on lands, on lands within the development area from the boundary of an adjacent agricultural use. I'm suggesting put in, in the alternative to make sure that we're flipping over to an alternative. If such a buffer is deemed infeasible by the county, require a combination of a lesser buffer, tall fencing, and tree plantings along the boundary, and once again, insert the parenthetical phrase, on lands within the development area, so that nobody's going to claim that the agricultural land needs to eat up this buffer. To limit adverse effects related to noise, dust, trespass, pesticide, herbicide, oversprout prey. And then such an alternative proposal, without that, why, and without the in the alternative above, it's unclear what this phrase, such a proposal, might be. Must be supported by the Agriculture Advisory Committee, County Agricultural Commissioner, and this provision has or other recognized authority, which I thought was rather indefinite, who's going to recognize? And you go out and say, well, there's, my buddy Jim over here knows a lot about farmland, and this looks good to him. So unless we have something other that we want to recognize right now, I think we ought to stick with the two things that we have here. Assuming that you want to have this in here at all.
I think the, the fact it's an alternative is self-evident, but I have a problem putting it in there. I like the idea of identifying where it's supposed to go. I think it's a good idea. In general, the last sentence there has me concerned, and I, the other recognized authority is vague and probably shouldn't be there. My concern is that we're essentially, not quite granting approval authority, but putting authority on either one county employee or advisory committee. I understand we want to get their expertise in on the process, but it seems like the approving authority of the project is ultimately the, the entity which, which will determine whether or not that works. So maybe we say, you know, such, you know.
So you're suggesting that?
We'd want input from the advisory committee and the ag commissioner, but the, the approval authority is, is with the approval body, whether it's the planning director, or the planning commissioner, or the board of supervisors, whoever has the authority to approve the project.
How about, how about the Agriculture Advisory Committee and the County Agricultural Commissioner shall be consulted for their views on such a proposal?
Do we just say, such an alternative proposal must be submitted to the Agriculture Advisory Committee and the County Agricultural Commissioner for comment and review?
That's fine.
You have a third wheeling, too.
I mean, I think with those changes, I'm, I'm fine with this.
Great. Okay, so the next thing in my last was to deal with RP-1E. We're not, you know, I think we ought to talk conceptually about it as far as we're including it itself, but then I have some suggestions.
I think that's appropriate. The other thing I'd suggest we do before we tackle IMRP-1E is follow up on Mr. Guaramandi's observation, which I think also came from the ag commissioner with RP-2D, where when the plan was drafted, there was not in existence a county resource conservation district, and now there is. So we should change the language to recognize that, and we might say something like cooperate with the Calaveras County Resource Conservation District, et cetera, or something more appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to have it, have it in here at all, this gives that district a, a voice with the county. I have no objection to consult with, and then that's all we really need, consult with the Calaveras County Resource Conservation District to facilitate the identification, et cetera.
How does everybody feel about that?
Everyone's fine.
I think I have all four heads nodding right now. Very quiet, hard to hear that.
Tell me, browse for it.
I'm not sure which is better, because I, I think that the Resource Conservation District itself goes out and tries to obtain grant funding and identifies programs that it thinks should be undertaken, and pursues funding for those. So I don't think it's such a matter as consulting with them as it is helping them out when we can. And that's why I chose the word cooperate. But there are no doubt people here who have more expertise on this subject than I do.
Well, if now, they should come forward or forever hold their pace.
Bob, do you have more expertise on this subject than we do?
I think Kelly's going in the right direction here.
Cooperate.
I think they're their own entity, and they have their own purpose. And the idea was to cooperate with it when, when it's appropriate.
Cooperate, great.
So there was a memo from Kevin Wright, the ag commissioner, who's very involved with the conservation district, and his only comment on this was, the policy is out of date. As we now have a resource conservation district, probably would be good to add what they are going to do now and what we have, and that we have one as far as facilitating conservation efforts. So, doesn't really help, but, but, you know, maybe explains a little bit about what they do. So they, they do work towards conservation. So they, they do work towards conservation efforts. There's programs that they have that, you know, a lot of different programs and fundings, as you suggested. They are a separate entity. They have their own, I think it's elected board, so maybe cooperate is...
Or would we coordinate with them? Is it a task that we're going to be doing, need to do anyway? Are we committing ourselves to identifying, acquiring, and promoting programs and funding?
Well, the second bullet on the next page talks about things that the county department bagged us. It's part of that same program. So coordinate maybe is as good a term as any?
Coordinate or cooperate.
Cooperate sounds like we're not taking an active role. We're just being cooperative, whereas coordinating sounds like we have an active interest in this, and we're...
Responsibility to equal level.
We're really being picky.
It seems like it's, and they're there. The idea was to, you know, just help facilitate that if need be, and then now there's a partner, if you will, available.
To coordinate and cooperate with.
Well, less, commits us to less if we say cooperate, and it's their function to be doing it, and they should be the prime movers. So I, I go with, Mr. Wooster's cooperate. I always cooperate.
This is one of these where I don't care.
But maybe we can move on?
I think that you're, we're checking right now, there's some case law surrounding some of the terminology. Coordinate means, specifically...
Collaborate, yeah. But that's, I think, collaborate had a legal... Yeah.
Wave two, maybe.
So do we get in trouble with cooperate?
Let's, let's stick with cooperate right now, and unless that term, you know, brings up some issues, so we can come back and revisit it if we find it. That's maybe not a term that we want to use. I'm comfortable with cooperate at this point.
So we're...
Given that we have a conservation district here, I'm not sure that the footnote is necessary at this point. You know, when it was a new idea, it sort of helped, but I don't see the reason to keep that footnote in there.
Correct.
It could probably go now. It exists.
Is there consensus there?
Yep.
To take it out?
Take it out.
Yeah, fine. Well, this, this may take a while.
Yes.
We've already covered, I think, the background of the original RP-1E and how it got to where it is. Then it, as I said, it arose as a result of impact 4.2-1 that was related to the conversion of prime farmland, unique farmland, or farmland of statewide importance, which I'll just call farmlands. And the concern was that the build-out could result in the loss of such farmland to non-ag uses. And at that time, countywide data, according to BER, related to farmlands was not available, so an analysis of the potential impacts associated with conversion of such lands could not be The DER focused on potential impact to conversion of ag, forest, and mineral resources that would not be protected by the resource production or working lands designations in the draft general plan. And so that was the concern. And at the time it was prepared, the important farmland mapping data was not available, and in the absence of such data, physical mitigation was not available. That's what they said. And the final impact report says that since the draft was released, there are new soil maps and data for the county, but it hasn't yet released the mapping data, and I understand that that's still the case.
Yes.
So, so far as I can tell, we do not know whether there exists any farmland in this If there was, we have no idea where it is. And if it's here, we have no idea whether it's already protected by a resource production or working lands designation. So if we're dealing with the impact here, I don't see how mitigation can be any more feasible now without the mapping data than it was when the draft ER was prepared because of the same absence and the same mapping data. And I don't see why the general plan should be requiring the county to draft guidelines to mitigate an impact that may not even exist, since there may be no farmland, or what there is may already be protected. That's the first reason not to accept these changes to RP-1E. But if we're going to go further, there's a definition of ag land, and one provides for mitigation for the farmlands if we knew what they were, if they exist. And if that mapping data is not available, which I understand is the case now, then we're going to have mitigation for land that meets the requirement of prime agricultural land, as defined in Public Resources Code 51201, paragraph 1, 2, 3, or 4. And like Ms. Platt did, I went and looked that up. And it means, "All land qualifies for rating as Class 1 or Class 2 in the Natural Resource Conservation Service Land Use Capability classifications. 2, land which qualifies for rating 80 through 100 in the story index rating. 3, land which supports livestock used for the production of food and fiber, and which has an annual carrying capacity equivalent to at least one animal unit per acre, as defined by the USDA. 4, land, plant of a fruit or nut-bearing trees, vines, bushes, or crops, which have a non-bearing period of less than five years, and which will normally return during the commercial bearing period on an annual basis, from the production of unprocessed ag plant production not less than $200 per year." And reading that, I don't see how anybody can know what's included here. I mean, who can tell whether their ground, or anybody's ground qualifies for rating 80 through 100 in the story index rating, or is it Class 1 or Class 2 in the National Resource Conservation Service Land Use Capability? So, so far, this doesn't look very workable to me. Now we get to the part where it says, "In the interim, the county will utilize the Calaveras County Ag Coalition Resource Production Lands Mitigation Program, DED lines, prepared November 8, 2011, Appendix B." I understand that's been updated, and I'm assuming we'll be dealing with the updated version. First question is, "In your interim before what?" Because there's an interim, there's two interims. One is establishing alternatives for conversion of RP land. That's the first sentence. The second one is establishing mitigation guidelines for the conversion of ag lands, regardless of general plan use designations. Which lands might be the same or different from RP lands? We don't know. So the question is, "What's the interim?"
I thought the interim was until we get the mapping.
Well, I don't know.
That's what I got for my...
What's the interim?
I think that was the intention. That's how I read it.
I mean, since we don't have the...
I think I would have to cap it, but I think you do.
We need to be clear on what that is.
I think there's a whole philosophical issue here that is, are we really just trying to protect those lands that meet that specific criteria? Or, we've stated throughout here that our agricultural resource production lands and rangelands are important to us as a county, and do we want to protect them whether or not they meet that, those criteria for production?
I think that's the policy question before you. I mean, clearly, the sequel requirement is limited.
Right.
But we have the broader question of what is the goal and purpose of the plan? What are we trying to accomplish?
Well, then, I think under, under Appendix B, I think it's clear they're trying to, well, Mr. Guaramendi said that they're trying to cover all resource production land, although Appendix B defines reproduction, uh, resource production land not as anything designated as that in the general plan, but gives a whole litany of, of attributes. That's why, when I looked at this last night, I thought, I thought that they were giving a broader, possibly a broader definition of resource production land, including some lands that were not designated resource production land, but apparently that's not the case.
I thought I read that somewhere, though. It's whether or not designated, right?
Correct. But I still would like to know what the interim is.
Well, I think we can, these two of us think the interim means until we get the mapping. I think you've raised a lot of other questions.
Oh, I have a lot more of those.
So maybe three of us, three of us think that.
Okay, well, that's, and it doesn't matter what I think.
Okay.
Okay.
Unless you can convince us otherwise.
But it doesn't make sense for us to be completing our general plan development and saying, "In the interim still, if..."
Right.
"...that our intention isn't to use that map as the basis for determining which lands should be protected anyway." I think that's...
Yeah, I mean, we have to clear, clarify what we mean by interim, and then we have to decide whether that's something we want, if you say.
Yeah, I'm saying that, that the question is, do we want to narrowly define the prime agricultural land and rangelands to meet the criteria that were just read to us?
Manager, could I, could I explain something?
Yes.
I hope.
When we were working on this, and believe me, we had a very broad representation of agricultural interest. Kelly's right that there, well, we can identify, we can identify vineyards, orchards, irrigated ground today, satellite pictures, you can see it. But what we were thinking is that it's so limiting, the soils, Calaveras County, as far as the soils are concerned, it'd be very limiting. But you add water, and all, all this ground could become, a lot of this ground, I should say, could become prime agricultural lands. The vineyards that we've had in this county are an example, the orchards. And we did, we were very hesitant to limit it to the definitions that are being used, because I look at the pictures on the wall there, and I think, you know, you put water on there, and you can have prime agricultural land tomorrow, or after five years or whatever. The point is, is that we were looking at it in a big picture, the future, and not limiting it to just what that definition is that's being used, because we felt that a lot more of this county could become prime agricultural land, given the infrastructure, the water and that.
And your intention was to include grazing land that requires a greater amount of agriculture?
Well, grazing, most of the vineyards and that are placed on, you know, that's what grazing lands are often converted to, is some other type of agriculture. So I just, you know, that's how we looked at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the thing is, once the mapping becomes available, then the citation to the 51201, it becomes irrelevant.
That would be true.
Yes, but that would also commit us to protecting or requiring mitigation for the loss of very small amounts of land, when perhaps that was not the intention.
Well, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear under the first bullet, it's thing, that once the mapping is done and we get it, why then, the protection is only for prime farmland, unique farmland, and farmland of statewide importance. That's the one-to-one mitigation. I, as proponents would like to say, two-to, two-for-one, shall be provided for those categories.
Again, it's just a philosophy thing. Are we already trying to meet that requirement, or do we want to protect or require mitigation for the loss of other agricultural lands?
Well, I'd like to deal with how this handles or doesn't handle the identified impact first, and then I'd like to turn to the broader issue, because I've got other issues with this, if it's going to be applied broadly. Okay, the next, the next question is, we're getting on the interim still. There was a response in the, to Mr. Guaramendi's letter, actually, that says that, that RP-1E incorporates elements of Appendix B as applicable, and then it says, "Appendix B hasn't been included in the draft general plan, and the appendices to the letter, which includes Appendix B are for informational purposes and to provide to decision-makers information on potential mitigation." But 1E says, "In the interim, the county will utilize," and so the question is, is this, is 1E, as this is written, for informational purposes, or is it binding? Is it optional? In other words, are we saying the county would accept mitigation as set forth in it, but might accept something different?
Well, in the interim, I, I would leave this as saying that it's binding.
So you can't do anything different?
Of course, utilize, it could be, could be interpreted as consult or follow. I mean, follow would be clearer if it's binding. I've read it without really thinking about what the term utilized means. I saw, oh, in the interim, do this. Should we be approaching this on, is this a good idea? Before, I mean, we don't know exactly what the idea is, I mean, but... My own feeling going in was, this is something that's been thought about very considerably, and that it, it might be an exception to our objections against trying to cover how conversion designation in the master plan, the general plan might happen. But I would assume that even if you didn't know anything about this, would you object to this whole thing on the basis that it's another one of these times where we're trying to bind the county in areas where we can't affect what we do so?
Yes, and I think we need to get to the merits of it, but I want to make one more point on how this doesn't work, to mitigate the impact that's been identified. Appendix B says, "These guidelines shall apply to any development project requiring a general plan amendment from resource production lands designation to a residential or other non-resource-based land use designation of the Calaveras County General Plan." Okay, the whole point of the impact... Okay, the whole point of the impact was to cover farmlands that were not protected by an RP or WA designation. So what Appendix B does, it's set up so it doesn't cover the farmland that was the subject of the impact, and it covers the farmland that wasn't the subject of the impact.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
So it, it just doesn't work to deal with the impact. Now, let's, I don't know how we deal with that. I would change Appendix B so that it makes it clear that it will cover farmlands, if they turn out to be existent, that are not designated.
Prime farmlands that are not already protected by a land use designation.
Okay, now, if we're going to get to the broader...
Then we wouldn't need an amendment to the general plan if that's the thing we're covering.
That's right. That's right. Now, if we're going to get to the broader issue of whether Appendix B is a good idea that ought to be applied across the board to, let's say, resource production lands or, or maybe even other lands, I need to get into it.
Well, right now, I mean, the first sentence of RP-1E is that broad, broad application.
Yeah, we should establish mitigation alternatives for conversion of no matter what, I think, to be helpful to people of no other reason. We do, we do have the, we do have the issue identified that, to the extent that it requires a general plan amendment to trigger this, it can be wiped out by the same general plan amendment. So that's, that's the issue we had before. The other things about this is it requires mitigation for the entire overall size of the parcel subject to land use designation, not just that that's going to be converted. So it's pretty broad. And the Appendix B mitigations appear to be limited to conservation easements or paying money to buy conservation easements. Because, I get to it here, when you get to page two, paragraph three, the third, like that, paragraph two on page three, this is the May 16th, 2019 version, it says, it's titled, "Alternative Resource Production Lands Conservation Methods," and it says, "Alternative methods may be authorized by the supportive supervisors, provided the land will remain in resource production use consistent with these guidelines." But the whole point of this is to deal with somebody who's converting land. And so that seems to throw it back to conservation easements, although it's, to me, it's not very clear. If we're, if we're going to specify mitigation alternatives in advance, I don't think that they ought to be mandatory and limited. I mean, there are some other things that, that ought to be done. You know, two, two of the major problems that we have in this county with lands, resource lands, is we've got overgrown stands of brush and scrub oaks and little stunted trees that are the, sort of the legacy of putting out every fire that starts. And we have the presence of a lot of invasive species. Medusa head, Italian thistle, yellow star thistle, blackberries, barb goat grass. Now, if we're, if we're going to come up with mitigation alternatives, we ought, we ought to come up with something that provides for mitigation payments to try to fix some of these problems, or try to get water to places where we can't get it now, something to make things better, rather than just locking up ground in conservation easements.
I don't know, is there anything in here trying to match the land with conservation easements with the quality, agricultural quality of the land that would be transferred?
I don't think so, but I don't know.
There is. Well, the easy thing for me to say, Mr. Booster, is, have you drafted something that could do a better job?
No, I mean, we, we set this up originally so that those kind of things could be drafted and be available for people. It didn't get done, but of course, the general plan hasn't gotten done.
Page five, that's great. Thank you.
Must be mitigated with equal or higher quality resource land. Another problem I have with this is that resource production lands is defined on page two
Yeah.
in a pretty broad way.
That's what I was going to point out.
And it doesn't, it doesn't tie to land use designation, and so it doesn't, it doesn't fit with the application sentence on the first page.
Right.
Because you could convert land here that, that doesn't have an RP designation, and so does it cover that too? I mean, how do we, how do we deal with that? Land's used for grazing purposes, so if somebody wants to go convert his land, he doesn't come to the county. He doesn't have to.
Well, not to mention that if all of these things are resource production lands, what is left to use, to replace them with? You'd have to convert something that's not currently in use.
Well, I think what you have is, you have resource production designated lands that are going to be converted, and you're going to mitigate that with resource production lands as
Just not the way it's currently, yeah.
It's not designated.
Right. It's just not currently, it's kind of equating all of these to being resource production lands that could require mitigation.
I've got more.
Yeah.
Okay, as I said, it looks like the focus here is on mitigation, appears to be. I think it should be broader, but it appears to be limited to conservation easements or putting money in a bank to buy conservation easements. That seems to be the limit. And I have a serious problem with that. I have a serious problem with that. In the normal course of things, if a landowner or developer wants to carry out a project, first, there has to be a perceived need for it or a market for it. And then, depending upon the designation and the zoning, which themselves are a result of public processes, there'll be an environmental review and public hearings. And third, a decision will be made, because it has to be made, based on the best information that's available. A conservation easement reaches out and controls land use where there is no project proposed for that land, and no need to decide now about what to do with it. They're not just another tool in the toolbox. They are unique. By statute, a conservation easement shall be perpetual in duration. This plan is intended to guide growth and development over the next 20 years. It says, "As adjustments to a plan may be necessary to accommodate changes in economic conditions and other things." A conservation easement controls land use forever, not just 20 years, 50 years, or 500 years. It makes it impossible to make changes based on economic conditions, population growth, demographics, or anything else. Every future generation, 20, 50, or 500 years in the future, everyone are deprived of their right or their ability to undergo the land use decision process themselves, and to make their own land use decisions on the basis of their needs and the information available of them. Now, you, you could justify this logically if, if one or both of two propositions was true. One, the people today are way smarter, way wiser, have way better judgment than the people in every generation to come.
All by that.
Two, the information available now as to what will be the best use of land in the distant future is better now and more reliable than the information that will be available then. I can't accept either one of those propositions, and that's why I am adamantly opposed to limiting mitigation for conversion of ag lands to conservation easements. We should do better. So at least if we're going to have Appendix B, don't make it mandatory.
So, there's a whole bunch of issues here.
Yeah, I think rather than get bogged down in the details of the policy itself, the more I look at it, the more we look at it, the more we realize this is confusing. If, if we're going to go with it, we need to revise it so that it makes more sense. I think the issue before you really is the policy. Do you want to make this a requirement that this type of mitigation requirement of some type of, you know, conservation easement or paying into a fund or something, it becomes mandatory as a part of the general plan? And if so, where does it apply? Does it apply to all lands that might be changed through a general plan amendment from resource production? Does it apply to anything that meets a definition of resource production land as defined in the Appendix B? Does it just apply to land that's, farmland is defined by the state law regardless of land use designation? I think there's some fairly broad policy questions that need to be asked, then we can consider wordsmithing the policy, if needed at all. So Commissioner Booster has made a very strong point of his position of it, I think I'd like to hear from the rest of the, I would want to hear from the rest of the commissioners to find out what your position is on these.
I mean, I mean, it's very clear as far as conservation easements, but I'd be interested in Commissioner Booster's opinion overall. Is this an area in which you think we should be dealing with the conversions, and if so, which land, let's forget about what's going to be the replacement land, but which lands would you cover with the need to find mitigation?
Well, I think there's two separate issues. One is the impact. There was identified, and Appendix B doesn't work. We've got to do something else with that. I mean, we have to define, that's a different issue. On the broader issue, should we have mitigation guidelines? I think they would be helpful. That was the original intent. I don't think they're required, because the real protection is, is the map and the fact that you're going to have to have a general plan amendment to get out of resource production. Depending upon what's getting converted, how much, where it is, you can come up with your mitigations at that time, no problem. It's protected now. If you want to have some guidelines so that people know in advance what kind of things will be acceptable to the county, I think that's fine. I think it should be done. That was our original idea. Where I have a problem is when it either gets limited to conservation easements or putting money in a bank to buy conservation easements. I don't have a problem with that being one of the alternatives, if people choose to do that.
The other side of the, what are we talking about converted? That's, I think...
Well, you do it on the, you do it on the general plan amendment, because that's the only trigger you really have.
So let me stop first, because I think we're, we're talking around ourselves. There's a real simple question here, which is, are we only interested in mitigating for the loss of lands that are designated in the general plan as resource production lands? Agricultural or range land? Don't worry about the exact wording.
Or mineral.
Well, but that, we're not talking about mineral right now. We're talking about agricultural-related lands. So, and there, but in Appendix B, it lists a much more comprehensive list of, of resource production lands. But if we're only talking about these mitigations, whatever they end up being, being applied to those parcels that are designated resource production, then that's a different discussion altogether than either one that only applies to prime agricultural land as defined by the state, or that applies to everything in Appendix B. So can we just get, so there's like three broad options there. Can we see what each of our sense is, so we just have a feeling of where, what we might be talking about here?
Well, I don't think as a practical matter, you can get, you can go beyond resource production or working lands to designations, because I don't see a practical, common sense way to say, yes, your zone's something else, your land use designation's permission to do something else, but you're, we think, we think you're growing cattle on it, even though, even though you may have already gotten a land use designation, this says you can subdivide it. The minute you go to convert it, here's a bunch more hoops we come up with you've got to jump through. I don't think that works.
Right. I completely understand that position. So Brett?
You know, the points that Kelly brought up, I didn't look into that deep, but the points he's brought up about conservation stuff does scare me.
But we're not talking about that. We're just talking about which lands we want, any kind of mitigation we come up with.
It depends on what you look at. I mean, under Appendix B, I mean, it's wide open, or if we want, you know, there's no definite definition of, I mean...
So, so the previous planning commission and board of supervisors have made decisions about which lands are resource production or working lands, which would be the two designations, that they believe apply to the most appropriate locations. So we either say it's those, it's a much bigger or a much smaller subset. The obvious choice is that the map was representing what their intention was.
And I don't see working lands in this.
I do see working lands as in it, potentially. I think that there's room for discussion there one way or the other, but for right now...
For right now, at least designated in the general plan.
Designated in the general plan.
Okay.
So would you like to see it limited to only applying to areas that are prime agricultural land under the state's definition?
Well, that would depend on... That depends on the, the map that, you don't know what it's on it.
Well, we're not going to have it before, but...
Depends on whether it's mandatory or not. If it's a list of guidelines that are non-exclusive, that's fine. It can be...
It's going to be a list of guidelines one way or another, right? But we, but we're going to handle that separately, and I think that might matter, which way you lean it a little bit. But I feel that, that we've already said it's important to us to maintain our rural character and our agricultural history. So to me, that says we're not going to go with the state's soil mapping. I mean, that's just not going to be adequate to protect the lands we believe need protection at some level, whether it's, whatever the mitigation ends up being. But, but I think that everybody here says that the list in Appendix B feels overly broad and pretty hard to enforce.
Well, and extraneous, if, if Appendix B is meant to cover anything that's agricultural, that's listed, designated in the general plan as resource production.
Yeah, we're not even talking about that. I'm trying to narrow our question here, so that we can move at least toward the next piece, so that we...
I tend to think that we should be dealing with, basically, what the first sentence says we're dealing with, inversion of resource production land and non-resource production uses. If we're... If we're, I think we have a myriad of problems if we're dealing with these small categories, adding to that the small categories of farmland that may or may not exist in Calaveras County, and which I agree with Commissioner Booster, has, it's not only, already resource production land, it is probably, it may well be designated in the category that gives them the right to do this.
Especially since we don't have the map.
I think that's a real problem. So I would tend to limit it to resource production land or if you want to include working lands, agricultural working lands. That at least gives us something--
Concrete to start with.
Concrete to start with.
Okay.
I wonder what Caesar might want to say about--
I don't think I care.
Just one moment. I was just trying to get us to some place where at least when we're talking about all these other things, we're talking about the same lands.
You know, I'm going to object to that. This public comment period's over.
Mr. Buckley?
So very briefly, our center totally supports the county's objective to maximize, to the extent possible, protection of agricultural lands, and not just because of agricultural values, but obviously for scenic values, tourism values, wildlife values, watershed values, the list goes on and on. And as you're fully aware, separate again from the ag part of it, because there is not likely to be a massive influx of residential or commercial activities happening up here within this planned period, the importance of tourism and the scenic values that generate in many cases, people choosing to come to the Highway 49 corridor to communities is benefited tremendously by the protection of ag lands. In terms of the breadth, I strongly urge you not to just limit it to the state's definition of prime ag lands. I strongly do support not just resource production lands, but however you can best define it for the working lands to also be protected. And the last comment is, is while there may be assurance that you can have confidence that if a general plan amendment is brought before, it will be adequately analyzed and adequately dealt with, when there are different planning commissioners at some point in the future, you have no more reliance or expectation that the outcome will be favorable for ag lands than you do on any other. It will be up to the judgment at the time. If the purpose is to ensure that you provide some sort of mitigation that will assure that, the more you can be clear and defined. So if conservation easements are not palatable to a commission member or to you as a whole as the sole entity or mitigation, please do provide some additional ones that are palatable so the whole package can be clear and there actually will be mitigation for ag land loss. Thank you.
So assuming we're going to work with the idea that we're using our general plan designations as the limiters on what might be subject to mitigation, I agree with Commissioner Booster that having conservation easements, the only alternative probably isn't workable. And I'm not knowledgeable enough about all the ways that this could be managed, what other alternatives we could have. But at least by limiting it to those general plan designations, you have the option to find another piece of property and maybe convert it to ag. Because if we protect every single thing that has ever had any ag-related activity on it, there will be no place to go.
If we're limiting it to resource production lands and working lands as designated in the general plan, there needs to be no reference to the mapping, correct?
Correct. I would agree.
Well, I still have the problem that started this whole thing, which was these farmlands that we don't know whether they exist or not. So I think for SECA purposes, and perhaps we need to hear from Councilor or Mr. Maurer on this, we're going to have to handle that someplace, some way, and Appendix B won't do it. That's the problem. We've got to, if we have to have something in the interim, if we have to have something in the interim, maybe we ought to leave it up to Council and the planning director to come up with something that'll work, that's, on the off chance that there may be some farmlands that are not protected as resource production or working lands somewhere in this county that might find themselves developed. I mean, I think it's a very remote chance, but if SECA requires that we address it, then we have to address it. I mean, that's what they started off to try to do, and maybe the answer is, maybe the answer is because we don't have the mapping data, because we don't know if any exists in the county or where it is, it's just not feasible, okay, to come up with a mitigation measure now. That was the original decision and the way the EIR went to draft it, and maybe that's all we can do. I don't know. So I think we should leave it up to them to wrestle with that little problem.
I think they need a little bit of direction as to some parameters here. So we've given them one, which is, let's look at the general plan designations. The problem of not having mapping that might identify this prime land that we are required to protect, I'm not quite sure how to handle that one either.
I think part of the problem is we're mixing two different things here.
Right.
There is the issue of some future potential conversion of resource production lands. It's not just farmland, but it's all resource production lands--
Right.
--to some other future use, and what do we want to do to mitigate that in the future?
Right.
And the policy or the program was we're going to come up with a list of mitigation measures. A distantist language, I think, should have been a separate policy because it's really dealing with a separate issue, which is the loss of farmland as defined.
Right. And it's a whole separate--
And it's a whole separate.
--from what we're talking about now.
So I'm happy to work on crafting an alternative that one makes sense in that, you know, we're clear what the interim is and all these kind of things. I'm still a little unclear on whether or not the majority of the commission feels that some reference to Appendix B is appropriate or desired. And I think that if we do, there obviously probably needs to be some, obviously probably is probably a, on some one that's-- But there appears to be a need for some, some fine tuning of this document if it's going to be included in the general plan.
I think Appendix B is, a whole lot of hard work has gone into Appendix B. I think it can be used as a reference for somebody who is coming up with the mitigation procedures to pick those out of there. I mean, I think there's probably some, and I have not done the detailed study that Commissioner Booster has as far as what are the mitigation possibilities, but at least they're providing two that are, at least could be used for partial mitigation, some--
You know, one idea before I forget it for a mitigation measure is, you could, you could deal with the Resource Conservation District with respect to things that they're doing that could be funded as an appropriate mitigation measure if it makes sense for the conversion that's before you. I mean, they are there, and they're looking at things that should be done to improve resource lands in this county. I would think if we're going to use Appendix B, it's going to have to be changed so it is limited to resource production and working lands designations, number one. And number two, make it clear that the conservation easement or mitigation banking payments are not exclusive. And then if we can come up with some, something along the lines of what I was talking about, that's fine.
But I also think that if we're talking about resource production lands, I mean, I'm not sure that mining lands fit within these concerns. I think lots of times you welcome conversion of mining lands.
I agree.
And so I think, I think, you have, what is it? The term is agriculture or timber production? I think that's, that's, those are the lands we're looking at here.
Well, if you're looking at mining lands, there may be no mitigation required at all. I mean, it may be a good thing to get rid of all those piles of rocks down by Milton.
That's what I'm saying.
And do the reclamation on them and be happy with that.
Yeah. So that's, I think we ought to limit what we're talking about here on that. And then as far as the, these farmlands where we don't know whether they exist or whether they're outside the designation or not, at least the process seems to be going along. And I would tend to go with Commissioner Booster's thought of, well, let's wait and see what we have and then deal with that separately when the time comes. Too many balls in the air.
Another piece of direction I think that Peter will need is, what will we consider to be adequate mitigation? Are we talking one-to-one, two-to-one? Does it depend what it is, what kind of land we're losing? Do we need some kind of a table? Do we need a menu of possible mitigations? And is there the possibility of incentives for people, if they are converting land, to convert only a small portion of it and maintain the rest of it? So I don't know.
It gets to be a very site-specific thing. I mean, I can see where somebody goes in and decides they're going to, they want to change resource production designation to single-family residents, and the land that they have in mind is covered with some mace brush and it's really rocky soil and it's not going to be any good no matter what you do with it for resource production unless you haul in a bunch of topsoil. The mitigation there, maybe there shouldn't be any. It just depends. And that's why, that's why I don't like these one-size-fits-all prescriptions.
So maybe we need some sort of a table that addresses different situations and maybe we have to have an assessment at the time the property is converted. I think I'm hearing from all the commissioners, though, that we do want to preserve our ag lands and working lands.
I don't understand the rationale between, behind the two-for-one replacement. You would permit me to ask, Mr. Garimendi, if you could come up and, why two-for-one? I mean, what, I mean, sounds great. Let's get twice as much agricultural land as we have right now. But I'm not sure what the rationale is there.
Well, on a one-to-one, you take 10 acres and you save 10 acres.
Yeah.
So what are you gaining?
Well, you're not losing anything, is what--
Losing 10 acres.
Well, I mean, on balance, you're not--
You're asking, you ask the rationale. It's not a good rationale.
Bob, if I can interrupt for a minute? I think there's a little confusion about what this one-to-one ratio does. It doesn't mean that we're going to go out and find some other land designated some other land use and change that to resource production. The, and this is where the conservation easement or fund, you know, fee program goes into place, is like, you're losing 10 acres and you're going to pay for setting aside 10 acres in perpetuity or paying some fund that might in the future buy a conservation easement, but you're losing that land. And so the two-to-one, or in some cases, three or four-to-one, some jurisdictions have applied, is saying, we know we're losing the land, but at least we're getting a greater level that will be permanently set aside as agricultural land or whatever it might be. And that's the rationale for something more than one-to-one. But in the, in the long run, any conversion is a loss of that ag land.
Now I understand. I mean, I was under the misconception you were starting with. This, the replacement presumably will be already resource production land, is what you're saying, right?
Yes, that's likely what it's going to be.
And so--
It's land that meets some criteria, whatever is established, that says this is appropriate to set aside for ag conservation, whether it's an easement, whether it's a bank. It's different than you might have with a, it could be the same, but in some cases like a wetland conservation where you, you know, you're going to destroy a wetland, so we're going to set aside, you know, one-to-one or two-to-one in another wetland that will be then permanently protected. You can actually go on in there and create new wetlands.
Right.
That's different than in this case, where you're just saying, well, we lose it over here, we can't create any more farmland. It is what it is. Yes, you can bring water to it to make it more productive, or you can clear the brush, do other things to make the land more productive, but the soil is there and there's no replacing that, at least not in our concept of time.
And we're assuming that we're not going to find land that's not already rain, a resource production land--
That would be appropriate.
Okay.
Right. I would support Kelly's concept about maybe funds being paid into a, some kind of a conservation program and that. One of the problems has been, is that there's, there has been mitigation done for projects here, and that money's gone out of county. It's gone to a bank somewhere else.
Yeah.
And it would be nice if that money could stay in Calaveras County and go towards some positive project. So I, I think there are other alternatives. I think it's important to remember a conservation easement is totally voluntary, and you cannot by law force it on anybody.
Correct. Which means it can't be the only--
But I do think we need to have, and it can be rescinded if there's growth and it no longer serves its purpose. So--
But it's not voluntary for the next generation.
We went through this, what, four, five years ago?
Four years.
We may have discussed this before. But in any event, I appreciate those ideas, and that's the kind of thinking that is needed to come up with a good mitigation plan. So thank you.
The other thing about the two-to-one, and the reason I think it was changed one-to-one is this, when you think about it, if a developer comes in and buys resource production land to develop, he pays for the development rights when he buys the land. When it's a two-to-one conversion, he gets to pay three times for them. That's a kind of a serious disincentive for anybody to come in.
I think that would be, that's the intention sometimes. Yes, it definitely is a disincentive.
And that's why, as expressed in the EIR, they did go from two-to-one to one-to-one.
You have enough information here to even get a start on something.
I think so. I think that it's sort of fuzzy at this point, but I think we can come up with something that reflects what I understand to be sort of the policy desire of the commission and actually word this so it makes sense.
Great.
I think we do value our agricultural and agricultural lands.
Again, I want to throw, there are two separate issues here. There is the overall goal of protecting resource production land in the counties. And then there's the SECA requirement specifically to farmland.
Right.
And I think we can separate those two and make it a little more understandable.
Perfect.
And then we'll repeat this conversation.
I think we owe Peter a commitment by the majority of the commission that if he comes up with something that's workable, we're not going to say, oh, but this amends the general plan, you can't do that. I mean, we, I am in favor of Peter drafting up something and that if it satisfies what he's just described, I would be in favor of it on other bases.
I wouldn't make that commitment until I saw it like--
No, no, not me either. I think that what we want to do is consider that, and of course, it might require additional tweaking of some kind, but at least we'll have the right documents in front of us to tweak right now. We're, we have such a mishmash that's not really addressing what we're trying to-- We have such a mishmash that's not really addressing what we're trying to get to, so I, I think.
And I don't think any changes we make are going to be so significant that it's, you know.
Yeah. We're not going to be.
Starting all over again.
Right.
It's refining, you know, it's the issues associated with resource production land and farmland in the county. And we're trying to refine this policy language to make it understandable and within the policy framework that you want to see.
And I think, as Mr. Buckley stated, the value to us of that agricultural land and range land is greater than just its production ability. So it's, it's not dependent on how much it can produce per acre, it has greater value to us, and that's why it's important to us.
But you do have the fact, working lands that are used for ag purposes.
Well, and maybe that's a question that needs to be ferried out a little bit more. You know, the working lands, in many cases, that's not presently being put to, you know, sort of traditional agricultural activity, it could be sort of rural estates. It has the potential to support animals or food and fiber production. But I would say most of those lands are probably more just, you know, rural estates or just, you know, vacant 20-acre parcels. I'm not, I understand that that also assists in that rural character of the county. So I just want to make sure that it's a consensus of the commission that we're going to include working lands into this broader concept of, you know, how we're going to protect that.
I think we want to look at it, the mitigations might be different, and a lot of them, I think, might be already developed as mini estates or mini ranches. And so it would still be a loss to have them removed.
Okay, maybe another question. I would be open to your recommendation as to, if that becomes too much of a hassle, we might, I would be willing to limit this to resource production lands.
Yeah, I'm with Tim on that one.
I'm not saying let's limit it to this.
Let's look at what the issues.
When we bring it back, that'll be part of the discussion.
And when we look at the map again, maybe we can remember to kind of look at that, where those properties are and how big of an issue that really is. Oh, my.
Well, now we don't have to worry about my edits.
Okay, I think we're done with 1E, right?
We're now.
Because I've got another one.
We're just not going to talk about 1E anymore.
Okay. This has to do with mineral resources, and the third bullet point has a, a new provision. It started off saying, clarify that a conditional use permit is required for all service and subservice mining activity unless specifically exempt in pursuit of the section 17.56.040 or equivalent. And then it adds, and that conditions will be imposed as necessary to protect mineral resources. And I guess I kind of tripped over that, because the whole idea of mining is to take the mineral resources out of the ground and do something else with them. And I think what was meant was, if you, if you go back to the discussions, what was, the idea was, we would try to impose conditions on what was going on around the mineral resources that, so that they couldn't do things to impede the extraction of the mineral resources. Is that right, Peter?
As I recall, I think that was right, that there's concern that, you know, as residential development and other uses coming next to a mining resource, you know, all these attempts to sort of shut it down or, and activities that would limit the ability to extract those resources. I'm not sure that that added phrase belongs on this bullet point, because I think we talked about two different and opposite things. I think that it would be better to create a separate bullet and rephrase that along the lines of what you're talking about. And I think we're necessary to protect the production of mineral resources, or something along those lines of what we're looking at. So I can, I can play with that language a bit and bring it back along with 4A.
That's what we always want to hear, Peter.
The one you, the one you worked at before.
Okay, I'm sure you all will be glad to know that's all I have to say on the resource production element.
Well, I have a major thing on RP4A. I think we ought to put parentheses, mineral extraction, after the letters ME.
I agree, because people don't know what "me" is.
I assume everybody else is okay with that.
I totally agree with that.
That's what I have. Brent, you have another?
You guys got it covered.
I think, Mr. Buckley wasn't here before. We will be discussing the special, I forgot the.
Future-specific plan.
Future-specific plan. On next Wednesday night, going to be inviting the.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday night.
Next Wednesday night.
Yeah. And inviting other interested parties to come to discuss it. And my notes for the conservation and, I'm just blowing it.
Oh, it's.
Are up here. Oh, you got it. Okay. So it gives you something else to shoot at. And we probably won't be discussing those until Thursday.
Because we believe we don't want to just barely get started on them and give everybody a chance who weren't expecting to speak to that today to gather their thoughts. Is there anything more, I'm afraid to ask, resource production, that we need to discuss? I don't, you guys all said no, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yes, so what?
Yes, yes, no. Peter, is there anything else you would like to?
I just want to go back to RP2D, the cooperate versus collaborate versus, and I think cooperate's the best word to use here. So if we're okay with that, then.
Good.
Anything you should be sharing with any of us?
No, no worries. That's good. So there are several things that are on my work list for the next couple of days, from yesterday's conversation as well as today. We'll work on those over the next couple of days, making sure it gets back to you as quickly as possible, hopefully before the Wednesday evening, well, definitely before the Wednesday evening meeting. And if we need to go back over any of those changes, I mean, some of it, obviously, the language on 1E, here we'll, we'll probably have further discussion on that, I'm sure. Some of the things in land use, we might also have further discussion on. So I guess at this point in time, just for the public understanding of, the next continued hearing will be 6 o'clock Wednesday night here. It will be a more open-ended discussion, not limited to just those who can't come during the day, but to provide the opportunity for those who can't come during the daytime to speak on a broad range of issues. And then, you know, wherever we sort of end up after that, you know, if we want to dive into some of the changes that we've made, I think it would be best just to, I think the discussion on the land use map and the future-specific plans will probably take some time. We've got about three hours allocated for the meeting. I would suggest that we wait to dive into the conservation, open space element until Thursday morning of the next day.
Right.
Just so we're all prepared and, you know, don't get started on something that, oh, it's getting late, we're all brain-dead, so let's go home.
Will, will our council be present on Thursday? Yeah, Thursday.
Well, our council will be present. That's yet to be determined.
But perhaps you could look at the.
We'll be looking at calendars to see what works out best.
Thank you for this information and know what schedule. My apology, but at this point, I will be unable to be here Wednesday night because of a schedule conflict. You'll obviously hear from those that have maybe a different perspective. I would simply ask that whatever written comments or comments I've shared already, at least be considered in that. And we're trying hard to be here Thursday. Again, we have tiny staff and we have many commitments, so we're doing our best. Thank you.
Would you have some staff that might be available Wednesday night?
Yeah, and that's a challenge at this point. We have layoffs and other things because of tight budgets, so we're very limited right now, but thank you.
So we will continue the general plan public hearings to next Wednesday night at 6 o'clock right here. And we will, oh, do we have any regular things we need? Do we need to offer public comment again at the end on items not on the agenda?
No.
So then we will close the Planning Commission hearing for today. I already continued here.
Recession, I think, is the term.
Excuse me? A turn, yes, turn, close, yes.
Continue the hearing to.
Yes, and continue the hearing. Yep, we've done that.